Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Everett Planning Commission meeting for February 20th, 2024. Ayana, would you please take the role?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Adkins.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Thank you.
Chair, I'm sorry, I'm chair. Vice Chair Adkins, would you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehopes people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to approval of the meeting minutes from January 16th, 2024. Commissioners, did you have an opportunity to review? And does anyone offer any amendments? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
Ayana, would you please take the role?
Commissioner, Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby.
Abstain.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Abstain.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Adkins is the non-voting alternative tonight, so Chair Chatters?
Abstain.
Thank you.
And before we go any further, York, would you mind addressing the way we're going to vote this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was going to bring that up under staff comments, but yeah, there was a vote already took place here. Okay, in our bylaws, under Section 2 reads the following about how voting is to occur. We have two alternates on the Planning Commission. There are nine members, two of those are alternates. There are seven voting spots, and this evening we have eight members, two of which are alternates. So the bylaws provide a path for deciding how the alternates get to participate in votes this evening. At meetings where the Commission votes on a recommendation to the City Council and where one regular member is absent and both alternates are present, the voting alternate shall be the one with the longest duration since their last vote on a Commission recommendation as the sole voting alternate. Not necessarily completely clear on its face, so I conferred with the Chair and the two alternates before this meeting, and I think we've agreed on a workable, practical way to work this out. In, I believe it was the October meeting, Commissioner Lark was not at the meeting and Commissioner Adkins was at the meeting, making Commissioner Adkins the last sole voting alternate, and then bringing Commissioner Lark into the position as being the voting alternate. That could be interpreted in a couple of different ways. The way that seems to work the best is that Commissioner Lark would be the voting alternate for the duration of this meeting, including the minutes and so forth. Do we have any questions or concerns about that approach? Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on to Commissioner reports, there's a new Commissioner on the dais. Welcome, Commissioner Shelby. We are really happy to have you here, and we look forward to working with you. Okay, on to Commissioner reports. Commissioners, do you have any reports this evening? No? Okay. I wanted to point out a study that came out recently. It's called the California Statewide Study of People Experiencing Homelessness. And it's interesting, it's interesting to watch California because they are much further along in their journey of making housing completely unaffordable and unattainable. So watching how they are unwinding themselves from this problem that many of our cities here in Washington are currently walking themselves into is very, very fascinating. So this study is interesting because it was actually a survey done of folks who are experiencing homelessness, and so it addresses myths such as homeless people don't want help, why folks become homeless, which their findings were overwhelmingly that homelessness was a result of housing being unattainable because it is unaffordable. So there are some really interesting findings, so I would encourage everyone to track down this study and read it, or at least read the findings, because it is really kind of a first of its type, and it is very illuminating. And if we have no further Commissioner reports, we'll move on to staff reports.
My only staff comments this evening would be to welcome Commissioner Shelby. We're very glad to have you onboard and glad to have a full roster of the Planning Commission. If you have anything that you'd like to say in the words of introduction, we'd welcome that. If not, I'd say let's get on to Park District.
I think I'll respect the public's time. I'll pass on the introduction.
All right, thank you. No further staff comments? Okay, wonderful. Okay, before we jump into our first agenda item, I just want to read some instructions to our participants. To those of you who are joining us remotely, please mute your microphone, or if you're calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for public comment, I'll ask if anyone wants to speak, and if you're participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record, and when you're done, please mute again, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you are in attendance, and we do have folks in attendance, thank you for being here this evening, folks, and you would like to comment, please fill out a speaker sign-in sheet, which is located on the table by the door, and we'll make sure to get your comments in. Okay?
Those need to be turned anywhere in court.
To Ayana, please. Yeah. But she said to me. Okay, and with that, we will, we will move on to Agenda Item 4A, EHA Park District Development Project Public Hearing. York?
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Here we are at what could be the last meeting for the Planning Commission on the Park District. We've had about four or five sessions on this development through this latest incarnation of the proposed redevelopment effort at Baker Heights in the Delta Neighborhood. Tonight's schedule, I proposed a kind of a method to walk through this. It starts with an overview and an orientation specifically to the Park District documents. Want to make sure that we're all very clear on what we are voting on this evening, what comprises the proposal, what is supporting documents in context. I'm sorry, it's going to be rather dry portion of the, of the meeting. The Everett Housing Authority team has prepared some responses. If you remember back to, I think it was the December meeting, there were a list of specific questions that the Commission was looking for more information from the Everett Housing Authority team. They have prepared some responses to that that are in Exhibit B, I believe, of the Planning Commission memo, and they're also here to provide a little bit of explanation on those areas and some overall context and framing for the development, kind of a reminder of why they are here with this proposal and why we're here today. Opportunities for clarifying questions on each of those from the Planning Commission, so we'll pause from that, but the intent is not necessarily to dive into the full deliberations because next would be the public hearing. So for the folks who are here to provide some testimony and some thoughts to the Planning Commission, it seems like it would help to have the grounding in those overview presentations first, and then, then we would turn to the Planning Commission for whatever questions, discussions, deliberations, and potential amendments to what staff has proposed as a Planning Commission Resolution 24-01, and then finally a vote on that resolution as it may be amended. Does that sound like an okay path for this evening? Great. All right, here's the list of the Park District documents. Everything that is on this screen is also on the Park District webpage, available for everybody who's watching at home or reviewing this after the fact. That website is listed up top there, but you can also get to it through your favorite search engine just by looking for Everett Park District. Starting from the top left, we have a formal application for the Plan Development Overlay and Comprehensive Plan Amendment. We have the checklist for required documents and an information booklet that Everett Housing Authority pulled together just for this latest packet. Exhibit A5 to that application is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, a specific amendment request that went through the, earlier this year, a specific amendment request process at which the council referred that amendment request to be addressed through the Plan Development Overlay process or along with the Plan Development Overlay prior to the periodic update. We have the Plan Development Overlay, which includes three, three exhibits. Exhibit A1, which is the Development Regulations. Exhibit A2, which is the Design Standards, and then Exhibit C, which is the Preliminary Development Plan, which is a required step under EMC 1929, which lays out the Plan Development Overlay procedures. Those three documents have been updated in pretty minor ways since the last version that the Planning Commission has reviewed. Appendix A, or Exhibit A to the Planning Commission memo details if you've been following along since summer or fall, when these documents were first made, published, and brought to the Planning Commission. You can see exactly how they've changed. It's relatively minor all around, some realignments of streets and, and a couple wording, small wording changes. First, then there's a whole host of supporting documents. Those would not become part of the actual Plan Development Overlay, although it's important context for it. You can see the site information and survey, geotechnical report for soil stability. Response to evaluation criteria is, is an important one. We've had a lot of conversations about the specific criteria that are required to be met for the Planning Commission to recommend and the council to approve a Plan Development Overlay and a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. You can look at a summary of the staff comments relative to those in the Planning Commission memo and a reference to that Exhibit A3 for EHA's responses to those criteria. Supporting all of that is an environmental impact statement. There was a determination of significance and a scoping process that kicked all of this off a year or so ago. A draft environmental impact statement was published in the summer. There was a comment period, and then the final environmental impact statement has the function of providing responses to those comments and editing or amending the information in the draft environmental impact statement in response to those comments or other new information. So very important analysis and review with regard to potential environmental impacts, and environmental is used broadly in this context. These are all of the, the primary documents for the Park District. This evening, you will be voting on these three with the Plan Development Overlay and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. That Comprehensive Plan Amendment is included as Exhibit 1 to Resolution 24-01. And it would be okay with me if anybody wanted to wave at me if you have any questions that are timely. Yes?
It looks to me like we're being asked to, to vote to recommend or not this resolution, and this resolution is a package as to all those four things, not, rather than break them out individually in any sense? Is that what, if I understand that correctly?
Correct, yeah. We packaged them all up into one resolution. The Planning Commission is able to separate those if you would like. Amend the resolution as you see fit. Complicated amendments to the resolution will be a little bit challenging. I have a Word document up here, and depending on the complexity of the amendments, it may make the most sense to have it come as a statement to the council that can, the details of which can be sorted out.
And are we talking only potentially amendments to the resolution language as opposed to amendments or changes to any of the constituent subparts?
I think amendments to constituent subparts are absolutely on the table. Again, it's, if it's, you know, changing an and to or, or the number three to four, that's relatively easy to track. If it's a con, 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 complicated and interdependent amendment, it might make the most sense to frame it as advice to the City Council to sort out. The Planning Commission recommends that the, that the City Council reduce, increase, something like that, and then we can sort out those details. I guess it'll, it'll depend a little bit about what the Commission has in mind. Okay, so these are the, the primary documents. There are other documents that are not directly before the Planning Commission but are important context, so I'll walk through those. There's a street vacation petition that was accepted by the City Council a couple of weeks ago. The council directed staff then to develop an ordinance that will pair up with the Plan Development Overlay and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for council consideration together as a package. That street vacation does not come through the Planning Commission for a recommendation, but it is kind of a necessary condition here for realigning the streets and reimagining the layout of the site. There's a development agreement. I have a slide on that towards the end of this presentation. The development agreement also will be a council document, and it essentially will lock in the Plan Development Overlay for a term for the build-out period of the development and otherwise deal with the procedures and the methodology rather than the substance and the regulations. There is a boundary line adjustment, and I'll put here, the first two are going to be processed through the City Council. The last four are administrative. There's a boundary line adjustment that will follow the street vacation and street realignments to put the, the new property boundaries interior to the site at the center lines of the newly realigned streets. The statutory warranty deed is what will convey the new right-of-way to the city and replace the right-of-way that had been vacated through the vacation ordinance. A final development plan would replace and update Exhibit C, which is the Preliminary Development Plan. Think of that as the, as the site plan and the, the maps that, that, that provide further definition to the words that are in Exhibits A1 and A2. And then with all that in place, then it's construction permits, building permits, public works permits, plumbing and mechanical. All of those will be reviewed against the Plan Development Overlay primarily, the Plan Development Overlay. So Proposed Resolution 24-01 has a list of recitals that explain the, kind of the rationale and the, the policy goals and, and response to criteria that would form the basis of the recommendation. And then on the top right there, the proposed wording is that the Planning Commission staff recommendation is to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the Plan Development Overlay, and it would be as attached here to as Exhibits 1, A1, A2, and C. Sorry for the funky numbering. A1, A2, and C came all the way back from last August with the original application package, and I was hesitant to change those. One is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. I chose a different lettering scheme for that to make clear that it's, that it's in a different sequence. You can see some graphics of the four parts of that. Exhibit 1 is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Exhibit A1 are the modifications to Title 19, the Development Regulations. A2 are design standards that get into the architecture and the specifics of the development. That is also a form of amendment to Title 19 because chapters six and nine, I think it is, and 12 include what could be considered design standards, but it made sense to separate these into two exhibits. And then Exhibit C, the Preliminary Development Plan, again, is the maps and schematics of, of where these things will go, and all of these have been designed to be consistent and mutually supportive. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment is specifically to change under the Building Intensity column and the Residential Multifamily Row, which is the land use designation for the Baker Heights now Park District site. Right now, it is limited to no more than 95% lot coverage and up to 10 stories of height. The proposed amendment would add the words, or 15 stories in a Plan Development Overlay containing, excuse me, an area of at least five acres. For all practical purposes, that is limited to the Park District site because by next year, we will be amending and thoroughly overhauling the Comprehensive Plan, and so this table will be replaced with something else. What that is, we'll have the rest of this year and into next to decide, but no other Plan Development overlays on a site over five acre appear to be possible in that short of a timeframe, so for all practical purposes, this is limited to the Park District.
Can I ask a question about that? Why then do we need that extra language? Why don't we just say, or just make it 15? And then in the event of time, we're going to change it anyway, potentially. Why do we need that extra narrowing, narrowing language?
I think you, someone could apply for a rezone that is a little bit more of a streamlined process than a Plan Development Overlay. And I, if I understand the, the mechanics right, someone could apply for a rezone as a quasi-judicial decision, which is kind of forced on the council to act in response to a proposal, so not a city-initiated one, but a developer on a smaller site could, could say, I want a rezone to 15 stories, and it's allowed in the Comprehensive Plan. Now, it may not pass muster anyways, but this, it, it seemed a good idea to, to make clear that this was limited and not available to any property in the multifamily designation, which is fairly widespread in the city.
And I guess, just me a little more, the only reason I'm asking is because it seems that we're just narrowly, narrowly tailoring this so that only applies to EHA in this particular circumstance, which I guess I understand, but it just, in some ways, honestly makes me a little uncomfortable because it seems like, why don't we just say, except for this EHA project? Why don't we just say what we really mean? It just seems a little disingenuous in some ways, and I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with doing it that way.
Sure. I, I think I addressed a little bit of that in the criteria in that I think requiring that it go through the, a Plan Development Overlay process is actually a useful tool to ensure that buildings that high are more carefully reviewed and regulated than another similarly situated development that just went to pull building permits. So there was a little bit more logic to requiring the Plan Development Overlay, and I could see a scenario where that continues in some form, that we have a little bit more latitude in the Comprehensive Plan for Plan Development Overlays than we do for every other development. I, that is a thought that just popped into my mind now, not something that was deeply held in this. It also serves to narrow the scope of the environmental analysis. What is the impact of allowing 15-story buildings in every multifamily designation in the city potentially? That's a lot to think about and a lot to analyze, and the kind of work that we are doing in the Comprehensive Plan Update, because you will see some 15-story allowances in many parts of the city, that's going through a much different kind of environmental review than, than this Park District, which is really focused on a specific area with a specific known context. Okay. There were also, Commissioner Yanisak, you had a questions about the origin of this policy, and there's an explanation in the staff memo as to the origin. If you would like to, to talk more about that, I would be happy to, but it was more recent than, than I thought, so I appreciate the question and the, and the, the research assignment. We learned a little bit about that. Okay. Exhibit A1 are the modifications to regulations, and I'll walk through a couple of the key pieces of this. Really, the two biggest ones are uses and heights. There are other minor, more minor regulatory changes. What I attempted to do here is show, this is the use matrix for the UR3 zone, which is the underlying zone for the Park District, and next to it is the uses that would be allowed under the Plan Development Overlay. P is a permitted use, you can just go do it. A is an administrative use permit. That is a discretionary permit with a department decision and the potential for conditions. I don't know if there are any Cs on here, but that's a conditional use permit, same, same idea, but hearing examiner decision. So you can see for the most part, on the residential side, not for the most part, for all part, they're exactly the same. So no changes to all of the residential uses that are currently allowed in the UR3 zone. On the commercial use table, most commercial uses are prohibited in the UR3 zone, and most commercial uses would continue to be prohibited in the Park District with a couple exceptions that, that work well with the, the Park District's development plan and in kind of a neighborhood scale and neighborhood location. Microbreweries would be permitted, but otherwise would be prohibited in the UR3 zone. Same with clinics, entertainment and recreation, and food and beverage establishment. A commercial daycare center would be permitted, whereas otherwise it would require administrative use permit review and, and decision. Offices, retail, and small animal vet clinics and daycares would be allowed in the Plan Development Overlay and otherwise would be prohibited in the UR3 zone. This is the quasi-public and public use and, and other use table. Food bank would be allowed, but otherwise wouldn't be. A religious facility or a place of worship would be a permitted use rather than a conditional use. And social services would remove Reference Note 8, which limits the use to within a permanent supportive housing facility. So that was the changes for uses, and those uses would, are identified in Exhibit C, the Preliminary Development Plan. So for a lot of these things, they can't just happen anywhere or on any scale. Exhibit C indicates where and in what form those non-residential uses would be part of the plan, and any amendments to that, any changes down the line, would have to go through an amendment process that I'll talk about in a little bit later. The other big one in the Plan Development Overlay are heights. The underlying height limit for the UR3 zone is, I believe, four floors and 50 feet. You see the, the schematic there and the list of height areas up to 15 floors in the southwest portion of the site and lower heights in other portions of the site. Also a note that the method for calculating height differs from the standard method in 19.22. It would be measured from the average street elevation to the ceiling of the top occupied floor, and the first and the top floor is limited to 20 feet, and other floors limited to 12 feet max. There are also some specific, some modifications to Title 19 around signs, landscaping, and parking. Then design standards, I'm not going to go through all of these in detail because it's a 30-page document, but if there are questions about it, either I or the EHA team can help support that with answers, but it's broken up into streetscapes, building frontages, building design, signs, exterior lighting, and is overall comprises a comprehensive design package that would create kind of a specific identity for the Park District. Then Exhibit C, Preliminary Development Plan, are the maps and site plans that add specificity to all that. So I would say, no, you could not turn an entire building into a 15-story microbrewery because the, which if you didn't, if you, if we didn't have Exhibit C, maybe you could read it like that, but with Exhibit C, put some kind of parameters around it. We know that as design progresses, there will be minor changes and revisions and updates to that that will be handled through language in the development agreement, but for the most part, I think EHA and the team have done a lot of work to bring this design to a fairly refined level already. Okay, any questions about the Plan Development Overlay, Comprehensive Plan Amendments? Okay. Then the development agreement, these are some of the key points. It's still under construction. We have a couple, I think we're up to draft six or so and bouncing back with, with a lot of hands in the, in the kitchen there. But the main core components of it include vesting, which means that the development for the length of the development agreement and the build-out period would use existing ti- Title fifteen and Title nineteen, the development regulations and procedures in city code, as modified by what I just went through before that. So if the city council were to approve an ordinance that completely changes landscaping next year, that would not apply to the Park District. It would be, it would have the regulations fixed for the duration of the build-out as modified by the plan development overlay. So that's an important piece of predictability for for the development. It addresses phasing and interim conditions, so what happens to portions of the site between demolition and eventual construction, and what are the requirements for 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 the phasing part of it. There is specific language, or will be specific language, on determining consistency and compliance with the final development plan, development standards, which is the plan development overlay and all of that, the development agreement and applicable law. So in general, the the city staff, the planning director, and other parts of city staff who will be reviewing construction permits will be directed to reject any construction permit application that does not meet substantial consistency with exhibits A1, A2, and C, and does not provide the level of of quality and public benefit that is incorporated into this proposal. So we know that there will be changes and refinements over the course of the development, which we certainly hope can be a ten-year thing, but may last longer than that. Any of those amendments that, I think I may have a slide on this, there we go. And this is draft, you know, the specifics of this is what's getting ironed out, but in general, minor amendments would be processed administratively by the planning director designee, and those would have to be non-substantial changes, not decreasing the public benefits. And then there are a list of kind of criteria or thresholds in EMC nineteen twenty-nine and fifteen oh three two hundred B, that would all go into a decision as to whether a certain amendment to amendment to the plan development overlay or development agreement would be minor or major. And then if it's not minor, it has to go back to the council with a recommendation from the planning commission. So there's room for little changes without coming back to you, but anything that's a a big deal, we'll be back here.
York, just generally, on development agreements, I, this is helpful, I guess I'm trying to understand what happens in situations where there might be, I guess, disagreements, not saying that that would happen, hopefully that would never happen, but in the event, I was kind of planning ahead, if there were sorts of disagreements, or, I guess, issues of non-compliance? Is that the mechanism for those things to be dealt with, is to go to the council? And, I mean, what is the remedy for the city, generally? I mean, you've got a project halfway built out, maybe it's some something, someone wants to go one way, the city wants to go another way, it can't be reconciled, I mean, how, how does that work?
Yeah, I think it would be, so let's say, we come in for building permits on the second phase, and EHA has decided to put up a building of of a hundred percent plywood, and that doesn't seem to meet the design standards and the regulations in here. The first step would be that staff would would say that this doesn't meet the requirements, kind of like we do with a normal project, just referring to Title nineteen, unmodified. If there was a disagreement on that call, I would have to check, but that could be a lupa appeal, a judicial appeal, or it could go to the hearing examiner first, I'm not sure, but there would be a a method for appealing that administrative decision, that it does not meet the requirements. If there is a desire to change the regulations such that a plywood building would be acceptable, that would be a major amendment that would have to go to the council. So there will be, there's always an appeal route. I'm not exactly sure at this moment, I'll think about it a little bit more this evening, whether that would be hearing examiner or straight to the courts for that administrative determination, and then those amendments would have to be to the council, to the extent they were major.
And I guess if I could, take it one step further, I mean, what happens if those can't get resolved? I mean, is there a, does the city, like, do a foreclosure? I mean, what what if, you know, someone with one side digs in, says, we're not budging, I don't care what you decide, we're not doing it, if that will just, we're gonna, it's not gonna happen?
Yeah. The remedy would that the city would not issue permits, so I think the city has, like with most permitting decisions, has broad authority to to grant permits within the legal requirements. There are appeal remedies for kind of abuse of that discretion, but ultimately, and then if, I think we're in a whole nother world, if if EHA starts building without a permit, but there's also remedies for that through code enforcement, and then ultimately, the courts also. Yeah, but definitely not expecting to go that route. For folks who were tuned in recently to the amendment of the Riverfront Development Agreement and Plan Development Overlay with respect to the theater aspect, that was an example of a major amendment, or one that staff thought was comfortable, were most comfortable considering a major amendment, and bringing to the council for for that change. Okay. I think that's it. I did want to touch on public comments, so thank you to everybody who's provided written comments. Those should all be on the website for the Park District. Everything that came in since the packet was mailed out was placed at your at your places this evening, so that's it for the written comments. And I think that's it for my part. If there are any other clarifying questions, thank you for bearing with you on that.
Additional questions, commissioners?
No, but could I reiterate that, for anybody in the audience who did submit, we do have your letters. We, I think most of us have read the letters already, so if you feel like maybe that hasn't happened, you don't need to remind us, we have your letters. I've read them, I, like I said, I think all the commissioners have, so you do not need to reiterate that.
Thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Yanisak. That was important, and that was actually the next thing I was going to say. Not only did we read your letters, we we read the submission by the Delta Neighborhood Association, and there were some very specific challenges that they outlined in their reasons for opposition, and so my question to the city is, have have we responded to the to the statements of the Delta Neighborhood? And if so, could you maybe give us some information about that response? Because they did have some some very, very reasonable concerns that I think they should have answers to.
Yeah, thank you. So for context, the Delta Neighborhood Association did provide a comment letter to the planning commission to and to the city council with regard to the Park District proposal. Staff developed a response that we just finished up this afternoon. It will be emailed to the Delta Neighborhood Association, and I've provided a hard copy to the chair and the co-chair. Brian, your copy's here. And I, it's a, it's a fairly lengthy letter, and the full, the full responses go about four pages with the with the initial comments. Any ideas on what aspects to focus on, or I could go line, kind of line by line and read through them?
As I was, as I was reviewing the the statement of position, let's see, it said that Delta would have four fifteen-story buildings under this plan. Is that accurate?
Consulting exhibit C, I believe that to be accurate, yes. So exhibit C, page, looks like this, and indeed, there are four fifteen-story buildings there, in darker color.
And for those buildings, there have been studies done on things like shadows cast and and those those types of issues, and so I wanted to understand from the Neighborhood Association, is it just the presence of the the buildings, or is it, because there were studies done about how that would impact the surrounding areas, like if they would be looming over overshadowing current structures? And and so I I guess I'm making assumptions that perhaps that was part of why that was something that they raised visibility around, and so I wonder if you could speak to the findings for how those buildings, the building height will impact the surrounding properties with the shadows that they'll cast and that sort of thing.
I will turn readers to the draft environmental impact statement. I'm not going to pull it up at this time, although if there's any specific graphics or something that we want to look at, we can do so. The draft environmental impact statement, as as updated by the final environmental impact statement, does go into potential or likely impacts of the development across a number of issue areas, including shadows and visual quality and aesthetic resources, and other aspects of the environment that were identified during the scoping process for review. I will say that that tries to take a relatively scientific approach to those impacts, although it mixes the social sciences with it and perception of of change and things like that, but at the end of the day, perception to some extent is in the eye of the beholder, and so different folks can come to different conclusions about what might be appropriate or inappropriate, or contradictory or complementary, and and things like that. The height has been a significant part of the debate, that one number of fifteen, and I guess I encourage folks to to look at the whole package. Height is an important part. Height will translates into visibility for more areas of the city, it translates into the potential for shadowing, and then, of course, it's more building area to contain homes and humans that do homes and human things. There's a lot more to this development, though, and when I walk through neighborhoods, oftentimes I don't really know how tall a building is from your experience at the ground level, so I think in a lot of cases, it it may not be, yeah, I'll just say, experiences may vary depending on where you are and what you're looking for, and how long it's been there, and how long the the trees have had to grow up around and the screening and those sorts of things.
Any questions about that that particular point? Did you have something? Because there were a few other points, but you go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah. Also, regarding the Delta Neighborhood Association's letter, on, I believe it's the second page of it, there's a claim around a development of this size will totally change the character of the neighborhood and is likely to drive out single-family homeowners, resulting in decreasing property values. And I was just wondering if we had any evidence that, I guess, eliminating single-family zoning, or approving multifamily developments in a neighborhood if that does decrease property values? Because my understanding is it would lead to increased values.
Our our response to that comment does make the same conclusion that I think it's, I I do think, my professional opinion is that it is more likely that this development, compared to the the current state, would be more associated with increase, although modest in property values, just from the investment and new amenities in the neighborhood. It would create new civic amenities and and retail options. It would probably increase the walk score and add another acre and a half of park in the neighborhood, and those types of things seem more associated with increases in desirability and property values, although that's not something that I did a deep analysis into. This by itself is not going to change the zoning in the surrounding neighborhood, but as I've been telling folks, if you, if you like the Park District, you're going to love the comprehensive plan periodic update, because that will be changing single-family zoning in the city by by requirement of the state legislature via the middle housing bill. We did not find a strong chance that this would drive out low-income renters from the neighborhood either, in terms of a displacement, or likely lead to the abandonment of of houses by the owners either. Not to say that none of those are possible, and different cases, individual cases may differ from the overall average change.
Did that satisfy Commissioner Atkins, or did you have a follow-up?
That that satisfied that, that specific question.
Okay. A lot of the issues that were raised by the Delta Neighborhood Statement of Position, I just want to say, I I support you, but these are conditions that are not unique to Delta. These are things that neighborhoods around the city are struggling with, so I want to make sure to separate those from this Park District aspect of this. The youth jail, that is, of course, something of concern, the fact that we have a youth jail in a neighborhood, but again, I want to try to separate out these issues and keep it pertaining just to the Park District project. They raised the issue of parking, and and I think that that is a really difficult conversation in general to have around how we're going to meet our need to build nearly thirty-nine thousand housing units and all of those folks, and accommodate that on our streets, and build new infrastructure for mass transit, and I, so, I mean, this is a, this is a huge infrastructure issue on a long-term basis, but I think it is a very good question, how parking is going to be treated with the Park District, so I'm wondering if any of your responses address that point.
On on that one, I will, if it's okay, defer to more of the expert on the topic. We have, I think I saw Marnie Heffron with Heffron Transportation, who was the transportation consultant for this, and helped write, or did write, the appendix H, maybe, to the draft environmental impact statement, which went in some detail at the anticipated parking demand and travel demand characteristics of the development at once built out. That analysis with the assumptions that are are in inside of it did find that the Park District, as defined in the plan development overlay, would provide sufficient parking for its needs. If the if the the EHA team wasn't going to get into parking, maybe they they could in response to your question, though.
Could I just ask, has the city, in recommending, you know, the, moving this forward, has the city, the planning department, is the department just relying on the analysis in here and the assumptions that were made, or has the city, has someone from the city independently confirmed that those are reasonable assumptions, and, I mean, kind of conducted their own review of that?
Yes, yes, the city, including more than, including our traffic department, has reviewed the transportation provisions and agreed that they were reasonable and defensible assumptions, and in general, the city has reviewed all of those documents a couple times.
I guess I have one other question about parking, hijack things, and this is going to be the big topic, but with regard to other developments in the city recently, maybe in the last couple of years, if you know, I know that they have been operating under a certain required requirement. Is it standard, have they all built to the minimum requirement of parking, or have they generally provided more than they need, than they were required to?
I can think of some cases of each. I think sometimes an individual property owner may see a need for more parking to satisfy their needs, especially if it's a business or a residence. Generally, that leads to better rents. If you're renting something out, if people demand the parking, they're not going to want to deal with those parking hassles, then the developer and the property owner may take it upon themselves to provide what they see as as an important level of parking. Others don't see that as a particular need and only build the amount that they're required to by the city, and wish they didn't have to build so much because they didn't think it would be needed.
And actually, I do have one other question, and maybe this would be for the parking expert, but, or traffic. In this, when the, when Park District presents this, they're look, they're required to talk about and do this study based on onsite parking? Is that all?
That, yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the focus.
I guess my question is, I, my, my honest concern is, there's going to be fifteen hundred units, I might understand it's nine hundred and, about nine hundred and fifty parking space is provided for. I guess in my view, that means there's going, I know people would disagree maybe, but I think that means there's going to be five or six hundred vehicles that aren't going to have designated parking spots. So my question is, has someone, or is, where are these cars going to go? Has the city done any thought or analysis or looking there to see, okay, well, there would be sufficient area in these neighboring streets for parking for these overflow vehicles? Or has that not even been been looked at?
I will defer to the transportation consultant for the specifics on what their analysis showed in terms of likely parking behavior, but I think the the idea is that that the amount provided would serve the demand provided. For one thing, I think there's a little bit of of double counting between commercial and residential, you can do parking sharing, but I'll, again, I'll defer You can do parking sharing, but again, I'll defer to the transportation consultant on that. I know that one of the concerns raised by the neighborhood is spillover parking. It's a common one with developments, and the city's Public Works Department is looking into the possibility of a residential parking zone that would kind of address that potential, whether it's needed or not.
And would that address it by simply putting restrictions on it, meaning pushing it out even further?
Could push it out even further if people would be willing to walk that far, but it would look like surrounding downtown, there's quite a few areas where two-hour parking except by permit, and then only residents of a certain area get that permit. So if anybody else wants to park, well, nobody else could park long-term on the street there. They would have to go past that zone, which would be, however big the zone is, could be a long walk back home. That would tend to discourage that kind of parking.
And I guess, yeah, the question I had was basically if, do we know, I mean, even if there's only 200 more cars in our spaces, they're going to go somewhere. The question is, where are they going to go? And what is, has anybody thought about what it's actually going to look like if those cars are either parking in the neighboring streets or if we put restrictions and they have to go out? That's what I felt has been missing, just kind of a preview, what I'm hoping to maybe hear later.
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, there is street parking in the surrounding neighborhood, and I think quite a bit of it, but I'll look to the transportation consultants if there was an assumption of that. Oh, is somebody?
And that consultant is here, perhaps?
I thought I saw Marnie.
Would you be willing to?
Sure.
I, quick question. If permit was something that ended up happening, are those free for the residents that live there, or do they have to pay a fee?
I don't think so, yeah. I think it's a fee, not a humongous one, but to cover administrative costs.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, too?
Yeah, there's the button, right?
Yes. York, can I add, before she started? It's kind of a traffic-y question. It's more of a thought or concern, but I know reading the concerns from the EIS and those meetings and then going out there and kind of driving on a weekend, and I also drive 16th Street to work every day. So my, it's kind of a concern in how we're addressing this is traffic, but it's more multimodal. Because as you're driving 16th up to people trying to get to the bus line or the new bus line that's coming, there's no sidewalks, you know? So passing scooters, you know, that are driving in the road and passing people with walkers crossing 16th. So this project is kind of set, it doesn't really connect to those streets that have the access that they need to get to other types of transportation. And there doesn't seem to be a nexus in this plan to require the developer to actually make sure that that's connected for them to use that. I'm just wondering how that works with the traffic. I didn't see that in the EIS. I don't feel like that was actually looked at as far as traffic is. Lots of study, lots of time was spent on traffic. I'm sure you're going to show us impressive numbers, but there was no actual thought given to those pedestrians and the safety and them getting to where they need to, whether it's to the bus stop or to the grocery store. And the same thing goes for the bicycles. If you're asking for reduced parking, it seems like you need to be able to have people fully use the other means of transportation, which I didn't see that addressed at all in the EIS.
Before you answer that, that was the issue of like traffic calming devices, which is something that was brought up by the Delta Neighborhood Association, sidewalks, those sorts of things. So I guess that's kind of a question to you commissioners, because that is a problem citywide. Go to any neighborhood in this city and talk to the residents, and they will tell you these same things. Same thing with lack of community centers for our kids. So a lot of the issues outlined by this are the exact same issues that every other neighborhood is dealing with, with the exception of a few privileged neighborhoods that have some really nice sidewalks, which I don't live in. And so, how much do we want to separate these issues that are really citywide infrastructure issues that have not been fully addressed from this particular project?
Well, I think my point I was hoping making that this, we're putting 1,500 units, which is going above and beyond the normal zoning. And I'm supportive of the project. I want this project to go through. I've been supportive from the front, but I think they need to make sure that they're truly looking at those connections to make their plan work. And I just think it's an element that was completely missed or not actually addressed very well in the EIS.
It's my understanding that there are sometimes, in exchange for the city allowing a project, that you require the developer to provide some of these, you know, I think sidewalks and access roads and things is probably the most common thing. So is there any provision, has that in the, I guess, the development agreement or the overlay here to maybe, to do that? I mean, there's massive opportunities, I would think, here require the developer to add to that as adding the strain to help offset some of those strains.
I'm sure Commissioner Atkins has comments along the same line, and then if we could ask or respond to that point.
I'll start from the end and work a little bit backwards, but hopefully we get to Marnie here in a moment. There are not off-site transportation project requirements for this development. This development will build out its edges and interior network with sidewalks, bike lanes, and bus stops and all of the components of that development. It's quite a bit of infrastructure that's going to go into support it, and in almost all cases, I think it's significantly better than what exists there now. There wasn't a basis in the analysis to require that. I think it could be optional as a contribution by the development, but the analysis didn't point to that as being a requirement under the environmental impact statement. There would be transportation impact fees paid by the development, a pretty substantial amount. That goes into system-wide improvements throughout the city. Sometimes those are directly in the neighborhood. Sometimes those are outside of the neighborhood, but they're balanced by developments outside of the neighborhood contributing. It basically goes into a citywide pot that can help to address some of those needs at a citywide prioritization level. So that, and then I think, were you talking about 15th sidewalks? Because I think 16th has sidewalks for most of it.
16th, I think.
15th is what I, and I'm trying to figure out where, those are the streets I've been walking by, and I'm seeing people in scooters running, riding in the streets. So if there's a sidewalk there, it's not functional. I think maybe the cross-sections going north-south, I think some of those have sidewalks, but they seem broken and they certainly don't seem to meet any kind of ADA standard. And my concern is not that the study didn't show that they were needed. I don't think that was actually considered. I don't see any evidence for people looked at people walking and riding bicycles. I just see a lot of study on the driving.
We have not yet heard from Commissioner Shelby, but I did see your light go on. So would you care to speak?
Yeah, I was just curious, York, with the transportation fees that the development would be paying and then going into a common city, you know, budget, is it possible for the commission to recommend they get steered in a particular fashion as a condition of the PDO approval? Not, you know, require them to do the thing, they're going to pay the money anyway. We would like this money to be spent here, or we would like to recommend the council spends the money here.
I don't see a reason that you couldn't make that recommendation, but I'll channel my public works colleagues in that they would recommend not making that recommendation. I think it was a question that I posed to them. There's going to be funds for transportation improvements, and there's been repeated requests specifically around sidewalks on 15th from the Delta Neighborhood and I think longstanding concerns about the disconnected sidewalk network in there that admittedly would have a little bit of a different context with this development having gone in. So I think it's totally fair game to make that recommendation. I don't know if our city would be able to implement that recommendation. I will point everyone to the ongoing comprehensive plan update process because that includes an update to our transportation element. The transportation element will guide the city's prioritization and investments in the transportation system for the next 20 years, which cover everything from the city's normal traffic budget to its use for impact fees to where it seeks grants. And if sidewalk prioritization is a specific element of that review of the transportation element and is, also is the overall investment mix and trying to address some of these kind of longstanding issues.
Commissioner Atkins, and then Commissioner Lark, did you want to chime in after Commissioner Atkins?
Commissioner Shelby stole the idea.
Okay. Excellent, okay.
I just want to point out and remind the other commissioners of the Rethink Housing Action Plan from 2021. When we were looking at how to, at the time, solve the gap of 22,000 units of housing that we needed to do, build by 2035 and accommodate, which now has ballooned to
Nearly 39,000.
39,000 units of housing. It was in that plan to recommend that we look at reducing or even outright eliminating parking minimums. And I would just want to remind folks that in pursuit of our housing goals, we do have to consider measures that are going to be uncomfortable for the neighborhoods.
And with that, would you mind chiming in on the parking aspect?
Happy to.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marnie Heffron. I am the principal of Heffron Transportation, and my firm has been doing business here in the Puget Sound region for 30 years, and I've been dealing with traffic and parking issues for nearly 40. As part of that, and I have helped the city of Seattle and the city of Kirkland and many other jurisdictions set parking policies and have also helped all sorts of developments right-size their parking so that we're not having too much of it. Because when you have too much parking, then there is the question of whether it induces actual traffic in vehicles. So watching the trends and the demographic trends over the last couple of decades, one thing is clear. We, particularly as you get into smaller units and younger people, have, they're no longer wedded to the idea that they must own a car. And we see that starting to take up in Census Bureau vehicle ownership per unit throughout the U.S. Here in Seattle, King County, the Puget Sound region, they've started tracking this more than a decade ago. King County Metro with the city of Seattle have one of the biggest databases that has made a relationship between residential parking and parking need and vehicle ownership and the demographic neighborhood conditions, particularly transit. And King County Metro was really keen on how do we get people to ride transit if we're just providing free parking for these residential units. So this database exists, it's called the Right-Size Parking Model. It is one of the biggest databases anywhere of parking data, and it's all here in the Puget Sound region. And that, we first tested that with the same demographic profile that you would have here in the Delta Neighborhood and its proximity to transit and other services. And we were finding parking rates that were well below one parking space per bedroom, not per unit. We actually are recommending in this that the number of parking spaces be tied to the number of bedrooms. So a studio in one bedroom, .7 is what we are seeing as kind of the average parking rate, which means that 30% of the units don't own a car. We then, so then you'll see in there, if you were to have a two-bedroom unit, we're recommending 1.4. And by the time we get into three-bedroom units, we would have a rate that would exceed what's in your current parking code. So it's really tied to the number of people you could put in the units. We also checked this against data that we have, a pretty robust database of brand-new developments that are being developed in Kirkland and Redmond. And we're, you know, again, probably a higher demographic for that whole Redmond and Kirkland, and we are still finding that the average vehicle ownership per unit is about .7 per bedroom. So that is what our base recommendation here is for Everett. And I don't know who said it, maybe it was Commissioner Atkins who talked about, there are some jurisdictions, and there's even pressure in this state to eliminate the minimum and drive the minimum all the way down as a way to get more affordable housing. So if you look through the EIS, Appendix H has a very robust, where we've laid all of this data out. It also has very specific recommendations for turning the dials on your code in terms of allowing reductions if you're proximate to transit. Most cases, it's half a mile to transit. We actually then have a higher reduction for a quarter mile to transit and frequent service and what that frequent service means. So it's a very, very comprehensive analysis that was then done to underpin the recommendations. And as York said, it did go through several layers of review through your transportation and planning department. Questions on parking, and then I'll move on to traffic.
I've got a question. Do you know, interesting data, talking about a trend that maybe younger people, renters in smaller units, are tending to have few, be less likely to be, maybe to be vehicle owners. Do you know, is there any indication in those, in that data, if that is a lifestyle choice or a financial decision?
I think it's both. We've seen the trend, you know, the more urban, and we've got places on Capitol Hill that have a vehicle ownership of like .1 cars per unit. So you have a very dense, walkable, transit-oriented, very young demographic in that neighborhood. We, in the past decade, we have things like Uber and Zipcar, where you can get your hands on a vehicle if you want to go to the mountains for a weekend. And what they're finding is that all of these services, they could take Uber every day to any place they want to go, and it would cost them less than owning a car and insuring it. So that's, it's, one is lifestyle, two is there are more services that let you live without a car, and then three is just the financial cost of owning a car. And I think they've come to realize it.
What about, is there a correlation between availability of parking and rents? I think, as we mentioned, York mentioned that, my guess is there's a certain demographic of renters who are, would be unwilling to rent a particular spot, particularly to pay, you know, a market rate for something that doesn't also include a designated place for their vehicles. There?
There's a trade-off there. There are certain people who know they need a car, so they're willing to pay to park your car and to have it secure in a secure garage. There are also people who will trade off the cost of auto ownership and get a bigger unit. So it kind of works both ways, and people make different choices. What we're offering is not a, we're giving you a parking space, you need to take it, but there will be some people, 1,500 units, the more units you have, the more you can balance and manage your parking. So there would be people here who say, I will live without a car, and then there'll be people who say, well, I might want two. And there's flexibility in this model to accommodate all of those.
And would there be an option for people to maybe to rent a different unit and pay more to have a parking spot, as opposed, then someone could, would pay less and give up the parking spot?
We actually recommend, when you no longer have one parking space per unit, that the parking space itself comes with a cost. We call it, you know, it's an unbundled cost. It's part of any transportation management strategy where you actually have to make a conscious decision that that parking space will cost you money. Now, on the flip side, the city already has the mechanism in place to put in a residential parking zone in the surrounding neighborhood because you don't want somebody to think, oh, well, I don't want to pay for that space, I'm going to go park on the street. So you end up, again, with a balancing the market by putting constraints on the neighborhood so that they don't have an easy way out of paying for that parking space. What we're finding now is that the security of having an off-site space and the theft and auto break-ins, people are willing to pay that extra money to park onsite in a secure parking.
If I could add quickly, just because I love data, looking up percent of renter-occupied housing units in the city of Everett in the 2022 five-year American Community Survey, just brand-new data.
Brand-new.
15% of the city's renter-occupied housing units have zero vehicles and 45% have one, which means that 60% of the city's current renter-occupied households have one or zero vehicles, just as a data point.
Just to add to that, I just, I do see, sir, have you gotten, if you fell out of a point to go in and talk later, I just see you raising your hands, want to make sure you know the procedure.
I have a couple of questions.
All right. How would he be able to get his questions addressed, Chair?
There is a form on that table there that There is a form on that table there that you can fill out and, and hand to Ayesha, and we'll make sure to get you in when it's time for public comments.
Other questions about parking?
Oh, sorry. I, I just will make it very quick because I know we have a lot of folks. A lot of scenarios were put out by Commissioner Yanisak about like, you know, what, what did we choose to do this? As someone who's lived basically every single one of those scenarios, I can say this. Like, I have one car right now. We kind of have to get a second one because the city can't support a driverless lifestyle. It's like, right now, like, we have a, my, my wife.
That's the point, Alex. That's my question.
Yeah, so the, here's the thing, we got to get there, like, it all boils down.
Chicken and an egg problem.
Yeah, exactly. It all boils down to resources. At the end of the day, what land use methodology is going to adequately resource us to meet the goals of this city? And the goals of this city are several things in my mind. A, they support the United States' mission to maintain its capacity to maintain peer-on-peer conflict and economic global competitiveness. That is a thing that we all now have to be considering it. The 90s are over, the early 2000s are over, the world's a different place. How are we thinking about what we do at the local level supporting national efforts? I'm in the Army, I'm all about nesting efforts into the overall strategy. The biggest thing that comes down to it is economic growth and generation of resources here. How do we generate resources? How do we spend those resources? We are denying ourselves economies of scale by not having enough folks in this city. We are denying ourselves amenities. I mean, all the amenities listed here, I want. But the black, the black, the fact, the black and white truth is that we can't afford those amenities with the density that we have here. Narrative coffee shop closes at 2:00 every day because there's not enough human beings in this city here who want a cup of joe past 2:00 P.M. to keep it open. Like, so if we want anything nice these days, we have to go out and get more folks in here doing things. And also, we have another challenge, too. There ain't enough hands, the row of the oars, to keep the city going where it needs to go, doing the unique and dynamic things a city, a competitive global economy does. So like, one of the things we need is resources to up our, and increase our transit, our public transit situation. The only way we're going to get those resources is by putting more human beings here, generating more tax revenue through sales tax, and getting, and applying those resources efficiently, more efficiently than a singer, single, private owned, privately-owned vehicle can do to move people around the city. And boy, howdy, do I agree with you guys about the light rail comment in here. Let's get that up to the college and not have it be bypassing that at all. More light rail in more places, I ought to say. So like, when we're looking at this, like, we need to create the scenarios, the conditions that allow us the resources to address the problems. Because the, the problems aren't going to be fixed without application of resources. And unfortunately, there will be a difficult growing period as we are aggregating that. But, you know, we can't walk away from the problems. I mean, Commissioner Ballard's 100% right. We need to do the things that he pointed out. And Commissioner Chatter is also 100% right. All those things need to be universally available in the, throughout the city. But it's, it's not so much a chicken and egg question, it's resources question. Where do we get the resources first? And this is the first step to doing it and getting those resources. So answers and solutions flow from resources. Remarks complete.
Commissioner Atkins, did you have something you, you wanted, or a question?
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was a question around transit use. If either you two could.
I'll do it.
Answer. So when it comes to transit use, my understanding is that folks ride transit at higher rates when gas prices are higher. And just in general, people are more willing to ride transit, from my understanding, when it's more difficult for them to use their car. Is that, is my understanding true?
Economics is certainly one aspect of it. Travel time is probably the primary reason why folks would use transit to go from, from any place to anywhere. If they can get there faster on the train, and it will cost them less, they will take, they will take transit. So, so travel time, speed and reliability of that service, you know, look what's happening to the ferries. If you, if you can't rely on the service, you're not going to take it. So that's the big focus on all of the transit agencies is connectivity, travel time, and then the reliability and frequency of that service. Certainly, that Swift Gold Line that's coming down Broadway will make a big dent. Talking about connectivity, the stops will be co-located where the signals are on Broadway, so 12th and 16th. So the primary walking route between this site and that transit would be on 12th, which is one of the reasons in conversations with the city, the off-street improvements and the investment in 15th isn't where you would, would necessarily put a major walking route, because once you get to Broadway, you can't cross, and it won't be a, a big connection to the, the transit service. This, this project is making substantial frontage improvements, it's rebuilding the entire street network. Those will all have curb gutter, sidewalk, landscape strips. That, we, we talked about transit, traffic calming. Those features will also help to control speeds. But further calming measures are really a city, because they have, they have external influence. So the city has to make the call on, you know, do you put speed bumps in? Things like that can be pretty low-cost measures, but they're beyond what normal development would provide.
Commissioner Ballard, you had very specific questions about connecting this development to transit. Do you feel like that answer is sufficient?
I have one more thing about the connectivity of transit. Very early on in this process, the Everett Transit Line that runs on Poplar adjacent to this street, one of the things that's been built into the street design is the ability to move the stop, it's currently right across from the elementary school, and move it to the frontage of this where it could be, have a shelter and eyes on the street and a, a much better transit station. Everett Transit is certainly interested in that. It would be an ongoing discussion because it requires moving a stop. But that is one way we're looking to better integrate. We've also talked to them about that route and the need to increase its frequency. Again, you have to have more people, more riders to then justify. So it is a chicken and egg in terms of when they can pull the trigger on increasing frequency.
Thank you. I appreciate the attempt to answer that. The 12th would be helpful. I'm not sure what we're actually doing there. I don't think it currently would meet 88. I mentioned 15th just because, driving there on a Saturday, multiple people are out there walking in the middle of the street. So if you're putting 1,500 more units, I'm assuming you're putting more people on a dangerous, in a dangerous situation, mixing with cars. So that was my attempt. And then finally, I appreciate you including those thoughts, moving the, but I feel like it's an afterthought. I don't feel like it was truly studied in the EIS.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, this is a question for Yorick. So bringing up the light rail, I remember with Sound Transit III, there was an inclusion of a study for seeing, just looking at the feasibility of light rail from Everett Station to EVCC. Whatever became of that?
Was just conversing with Sound Transit staff this week about that in response to the Delta Neighborhood Association letter. So it, they did confirm that there is a study of high-capacity transit from downtown Everett or Everett Station to North Everett that is part of, was funded with ST3. They don't have that study programmed yet. In other words, not exactly sure when that is going to happen. But that is planned work by Sound Transit, which should flesh out what the possibilities are for future high-capacity transit extension. Now, in the meantime, community transit, as, as Marnie mentioned, is planning and designing a bus rapid transit line that would go from Arlington-Marysville Manufacturing Industrial Center through downtown Marysville, down Broadway, to downtown Everett and Everett Station and provide a frequent, fast, and grade-separated, in other words, stay-out-of-traffic pathway to get to the light rail at Everett Station, downtown Everett, and to the jobs and all of that along the Broadway corridor in downtown Everett.
Yeah, this, I'm not sure who can answer this, and I don't remember. Has it been flushed out what traffic calming devices are going to be used in the PDO? So little roundabouts, or was it just like speed bumps? I, I just don't remember. And I didn't really see it on here.
I, I will start answering, and Marnie can rush up here if I'm starting to get it wrong. I, I, I don't believe there's going to be any speed bumps or roundabouts or traffic circles that are part of the development. I think the traffic calming is, includes on-street parking within the development that serves to kind of calm the streets, the street width and design, the landscaping, and then just the fact that it's not too far between stop signs within the development.
Were any of the sidewalks going to be raised, or I'm sorry, crosswalks going to be raised, crosswalks?
Got me on that one. Is that part of the plan?
It hasn't been finalized yet.
Okay.
It would be the main one next to the park.
That, and the middle one section right there?
Yeah, we've looked in whether or not that would be a good idea, but it's, it's, we're not.
We're not there yet. Okay, that's fine. Well, food for thought.
Additional questions, commissioners, at this point?
Just real quick, what's the distance between Broadway and the edges of this development? Do you know, Yorick?
Yeah.
Third, third of a mile? Third of a mile, plus or minus depending from what part of the, the development. So probably the farthest part of the development is maybe a half mile.
Hey, I think the commissioners have had an opportunity to ask questions of Yorick, and it looks like we also have an opportunity to hear directly from EHA. I think we'd like to do that if EHA is ready to present.
Bob Bankford with Makers and part of the consultant team for EHA.
Thank you, thank you, Yorick, and good evening, commissioners. Again, I'm Bob Bankford, a partner with Makers Architecture, and Makers is leading the entitlements portion of the project with the whole team of consultants. And let's go to the next slide here. So much of the presentation involves addressing some of the questions that the Planning Commission had for us last time. So that'll get into some of the targeted issues on non-residential uses and sustainability, but also have a chance to provide a little bit of an overview and talk about meeting Everett's goals and policies. And on the next slide, so Maria Royer from Real Retail is going to speak to the non-residential questions and issues. And Mark Frankel from Ecotope is going to talk about sustainability and decarbonization. Next slide. So again, be talking a little bit about meeting city goals and policies. Many of you have heard our earlier presentations talking about three key needs that the Park District is providing, housing, decarbonization, and equity in community building. But also want to make aware that some of the other key city and Planning Commission priorities right now that we'll be touching upon in the presentation a little bit, including the budget, the city's budget, public safety, and community engagement. So housing being the first big one, the huge need right now. And as what was already mentioned, housing supply is homeless prevention and an essential factor of providing increased family and individual stability. So Everett has a need for 37,000 homes by 2044, as the graphic illustrate, which basically means we nearly need to double the number of housing units by 2044 here. Pretty, pretty intense. So the Park District will be able to provide a share of that, but the graphic kind of illustrates how big this challenge really, really is and how much more housing needs to be built to, to meet this need. So by providing housing and reinforcing individual stability, EHA supports a city's mission and budget by reducing vulnerabilities and exposure to crime and other public safety risks. Next slide. Also wanted to point out, Delta's one of 19 neighborhoods in the city. And if you just do the basic math, a need of 37,000 housing units by 2044, 19 neighborhoods, it's on average about 2,000 units needed per neighborhood if you just look at it evenly. But looking at the listed neighborhoods and understanding that they're all different, Delta's probably going to have to carry a slightly heavier share, we're guessing. So if you say that 5% to 10% of the future growth is in Delta, that equates to somewhere between 1,800 and 36 units fitting into this neighborhood on, on top of what's already there. So the current UR3 zoning, it would take 60 to 120 acres of that to, to come up with those numbers. That's a lot. So ultimately, this, this emphasizes a need for, for compact development. And I think this has already been discussed, it's necessary for the economy of scale and supporting the amenities. Next slide. So also wanted to point out that, that EHA is, is one of the city's primary tools for meeting the housing needs and implementing the comprehensive plans, policies, including the two noted here, Housing Administration and Financial Measure III, supporting actions that will reduce existing high concentrations of low-income housing, such as ESA's Baker Heights redevelopment. And then the second one here, 4.8, 0.1, coordinating with the Everett Housing Authority to increase supply of housing for low-income and special-needs population within Everett. And I also want to point out the, um, the brochure that was included, that, that EHA prepared, that was included in your packet, that talks about some of the, an overview of some of the services that EHA provides. And just further emphasizing that, that EHA is a not-for-profit entity and the last-of-line service provider for people who are most in need. And that EHA serves over 10,000 people through vouchers and EHA-managed properties. Next slide.
Can I interrupt? I don't, maybe I shouldn't interrupt. Is it okay if I?
I think, I think it's okay because I, I kind of think I know where you're going to go, so, yeah.
I understood, I've seen the term mixed income. You just talked about how EHA focuses on low, essentially low-income.
Yeah.
Provider. And this is not a low-income project, right?
That's right.
Just wanted to clarify. And, and I was curious about the term mixed income. Could, do you, would you be able to explain that further, what that means?
I'll take a shot at it, and if I misstate anything, Jason will be here to probably correct me. But I, I believe my mixed income, I think we've said before that there are, I think, 139 units that were taken out with the existing housing that's been decommissioned. And those will be replaced and, and meet those requirements. But the remaining units will be, I believe you've used the term, both workforce and, and mixed-income housing.
I don't know what those mean.
So. Market-rate housing, but probably on the, what we've talked about is kind of on the more affordable side of probably market rate. Some of that might mean smaller units to some extent. And I know that Jason will probably expand, maybe expand on this later a little bit.
If I can ask a question, just a couple of quick questions. I'm guessing then, just to kind of anchor this into, we're talking about these, like, I'd imagine a teacher could live there. A, like, a nurse, somebody who is the, like, a technician, somebody who's a junior apprentice. You know, just everyday folk, our neighbors, our friends, people we went to school with. That's the folks who are going to be there, right?
Yeah, and I don't believe that there's going to be income requirements for the, these other market-rate type units. But they might be built, uh, they might be built as, you know, slightly more affordable, to be affordable to those, to those folks. I don't know if that fully answers your question, but.
At one point, and I may be misremembering, so commissioners, correct me if I am misremembering. We, we had a discussion about this property and the fact that it would be mixed income and the ratio of how that income mix would shake out with regard to the allocation of units was similar to the ratio of needs identified by the city according to its growth trajectory and the demographics of its growth trajectory. Is that correct?
That was one of my asks of the Everett Housing Authority is that they consider the city's housing targets across the affordability spectrum when working on out how to lease these units and how to develop the units. As to what the actual intent is, I will say for the development overlay and the comprehensive plan amendment, do not have requirements around that. and the comprehensive plan amendment, do not have requirements around that. So it would be at EHA's discretion, consistent with their mission as the project develops. And if EHA can provide more information on that intent, I think that's something that's on a lot of folks' minds. I think to some extent, it's not set yet.
What does the mechanism actually control that? Do you say that you will not rent it to people whose income is a certain, I mean, you put an upper limit on who you will rent to? Is that how that works?
Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to see all of you. So I think there's a couple of different ways to think about this and address this. I think from kind of a big-picture macro perspective, what we're all trying to grasp onto is one, subsidized housing on one side of the spectrum, and the other spectrum, everyone else who's not being subsidized. And so what we have always talked about in the evolution of this project is, one, is a replacement of public housing, which was 244 units. We already built 105 of these units neighboring the Park District, actually the first phase really of the Park District. The remaining units are 139 units. And so the discussion we've had with the city, with the community, with everyone is in agreement to constrain, unless things change, 139 units being the rest of the subsidized components. Which leads you to. Oh, sorry, yeah, Jason Morrow. I am the Chief Real Estate Officer with the Everett Housing Authority. Sorry for that. And so fundamentally, the Park District is doing a couple of things. It's meeting its requirements as relates to subsidization to serve members of the community of lower-income means. And then secondarily, trying to serve basically a wide variety of income levels of the city based on a couple just basic parameters. One of those parameters is just pure issue of cost. How do you cover your basic cost and your debt? That will serve a basic threshold parameter for which your housing will be priced at. And I tend not to talk about market pricing, although others are right to a certain degree to mention it because in general, when you don't have subsidized housing, however you are a municipal entity such as us who don't have a profit instinct. Additionally, we also have RCW, which controls the mechanisms for which we price our housing. In general, what we're doing is doing two things. One, in the short term, we're subsidizing housing, which provides an immediate relief on rents. On the other side of the spectrum, what we're doing is thinking on a much larger, longer horizon of how we economically can produce housing, maintain housing over the long run, and do so at a lower-cost basis than it otherwise would be in the market, thereby, over a long-term trajectory, being able to maintain rents at a lower level. Additionally, I've heard many folks today suggest that we're a developer. I would suggest we're a much larger, more unique entity than a developer. And I think this is a really crucial factor to consider, both in the evaluation of the Park District, but also in the evaluation of the intent. All of our development, whether there is a net income element of it in which there's cash flow that produces through it, is circulated back into the community, both in terms of social services, in terms of staffing. We have 124 staff in the Housing Authority. Over 70 of them are union labor, Teamsters, ASME. We do a whole wide variety of things in the community. And all of this money, one way or the other, is circulating back into Everett. And what I usually will say is, this isn't just the Housing Authority. This is your Housing Authority. This is Everett's Housing Authority. And it is a huge delineation differentiation from any other developer, both by intent, but also by our unique capacity to do a variety of things. And one thing I think is very important for all of you to consider when we're thinking about Housing Authority and impact, both on the subsidization side and on the other side, is that one thing that is not referenced is our management of vouchers. We manage around 3,700 vouchers in the city of Everett and jurisdictions very nearby. And the Park District will be able to be recipient of these vouchers in the same way that otherwise income-constrained properties would do. So just because we have a certain component of the housing that isn't following an income-constrained component of housing development does not mean that folks within those housing developments won't have certain affordability criteria met by our application of our service through the Housing Choice Voucher Program. So hopefully that answers your question.
Honestly, I'm not sure it does. I guess I'm just trying to understand who, so 139 units will be reserved as designated low-income, which means they would be, I guess, people who have applied through EHA, and there was a, I mean, there's either subsidies provided to them. I mean, that's what, something along those lines, that's what that means. I'm curious about the rest of it, the other 1,400 or 1,350 units. Are those just going to be open for anybody who can come in? And there'll be a for rent sign, and they can come in and tour it and rent it? But will there be constraints on income limits, or?
I wouldn't say, you know, I think one thing, from my perspective, one thing we all need to do is think about the time horizon. I think in the short term, the initial time horizon, and we are talking about a very large project. So one thing, we're talking about individual buildings, six, eight, over a series sequence of time being built. So in the short term, we're talking about on the front end, a couple of buildings being constructed over the next five years. You know, on the front end of any of these projects, those buildings need to cover the cost threshold. That cost threshold will most likely be covered by more or less what we would call market application of pricing. Over a longer period of time, that is not necessarily the case in the sense that if you can imagine over a longer horizon of 10 or 20 years, you have a different set of economic considerations to consider. One of those is rent softening for those who rent, which in that scenario, you would be considering some sort of economic criteria or a basis in which to apply that discounted rent to those who needed it. On the other hand, you would also be considering some of those dollars being applied to the social services that we provide and do not have revenues to cover. And, you know, if we take a look at the wide variety of amenities that are provided to the Park District, I think it's very important to note that those amenities are not covered by revenue. They need to come from somewhere, and they need to be carried by debt. And they're carried by debt over a very long horizon debt trajectory. And so I raise these things because it's not just a simple subject, one variable. It's a multi-variable puzzle of how do you provide social services, housing, all the amenities, address all the infrastructure needs, which are well beyond typical development capacity to afford in a typical kind of economic scenario. And then to do all of that over a long-term horizon and still be trying to suppress rents to provide increased housing affordability to the city.
So Jason, what I hear you saying is that the replacement commitment that EHA made, you're going to be fulfilling that with the dedicated 139 units. The additional units will be market rate, but just like any market-rate housing, the occupants of those units could be utilizing other programs that could assist with affordability of it. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and we would be administering those buildings. So when we talk about things like tenant protection, relocation, and other things, that management would be consistent with our practices.
Okay. Commissioners, additional questions on this issue? Commissioner Shelby?
Yes, so over your time horizon, and I know you have to support your investment with market rate, is the city looking to not see then the return of that 139 units until the very end of all of your phases? Or are we going to see roughly the same percentage of units returned in low income as the phases continue being built?
So we haven't yet planned out exactly in what part of the horizon these 139 units hit into the phasing. We would like them to be in the earlier side of the phasing, but not necessarily in the first phase. The first phase, we don't expect there to be subsidized housing. I think ultimately, the way that subsidized housing is provided and developed tends to be in a singular, unique building form due to the complexities of a particular program that administers this and for which we have to be compliant. So I can't give you a direct answer of when it occurs. I would say by preference, we would prefer to be kind of on the first half rather than on the later half. But we're very willing to have an ongoing conversation with you all, with the community, with the city, on what the needs are.
One other question I've had, thinking, is the idea is, for example, you have a 15-story tower. Maybe first three floors will be, I guess, built out and furnished and with appliances or fixtures of a certain caliber because they're only going to be able to return lower rents. Whereas as you move up, perhaps the top three or four floors will have nicer fixtures and charge you more rent. Is that kind of the idea? Is there going to be differentiation, I suppose, in the, I guess, maybe the quality and the amenities offered on various floors, various phases to account for that differentiation in cost and get it to market rate?
Once again, I personally wouldn't use the word market rate, which is why we use mixed income, or I use moderate income, or I use people just like all of us in this room. Because some of these words like market rate signify for most people luxury. You know, we are not, we are a housing authority. We're a municipal entity. We don't provide luxury housing by intent, but we do have to build housing by cost. And I think, you know, one thing that's important for all of us to understand is that the cost structure in Everett is the same cost structure in Bellevue and in Redmond and in Seattle, and yet the rents here are much, much reduced. So to a certain degree, you don't have a whole lot of choices about many of the components of the building. They do remain the same, their cost structure remains the same whether you're calling it an affordable building or whether you're calling it a market-rate building. Your actual structure is very much similar, dictated by code, dictated to a certain degree by material requirements for durability and the like. And so you end up with very small variances, which can extend to larger if you get into the luxury end of things. But fundamentally, the building components, in terms of your exterior facade, in terms of the lived experience that the residents have, is very similar. But we have a lot of luxury flourishings in the units, a little less so in the affordability space. But we do produce affordable buildings that have tenant decks with beautiful overviews of property, with places for folks to lounge and find solace. And so a lot of the same components you would see in those buildings do remain the same kind of taste, although the amount of expense that goes into kind of luxury flourishes is reduced on those buildings for which we have subsidization and which we have different cost control parameters, and also just different demographics.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, I really appreciate you mentioning not using the word market rate. I would just like to remind the other commissioners that Everett is a rather moderate-income or low-income community. I believe when we were looking over the Rethink Housing Plan a couple of years ago, we found that, I forgot if it was a single-income or family of four, I think it was family of four, earns like $55,000 a year. But compared to Snohomish County as a whole, the Snohomish County number is closer to $100,000. And so I just do think it is really important to keep in mind the perspective that this is workforce or moderate income rather than just market rate, because market rate would necessarily, wouldn't necessarily mean that we're having our own Everett residents being able to afford this.
So you're not, and well, you don't know yet, but all of the low-income housing that you have to provide back, the 130 units or whatever, are not necessarily going to be in Phase 1?
No.
When, is there a requirement on, at what point in this project you have to have those built?
No.
So we might not see those units for quite a while.
Could be a while.
Okay.
Well, and to clarify, 105 of those units have already been produced. Is that accurate at the neighboring complex?
Yeah, so that's absolutely correct. So all of this development is on former public housing land. And so the phase that was already built was the first phase on this land. And so we've already produced 105 units of the 244 total units of replacement. So we have 139 units to meet kind of a one-to-one replacement ratio. So we're not halfway there, but we've already made a pretty significant measure. I would like to point out that this discussion has been over a very long horizon. We're not at the starting point. We started quite a long time ago, several, several years back in the process. And one of the components of this entire conversation was around poverty decentralization and creating what the Housing Authority and in the HUD world and affordable housing world uses, community of opportunity as a term. So very much, we're focused on those two terms, both poverty decentralization in the sense of removing some of the concentrations which don't produce real positive outcomes, creating more increased diversity and integration, provide people a lot more opportunity over the long term, and in doing so, being very responsive to both the community's concerns about centralization of poverty, the city's concerns about that, and our own concerns. And so I think, you know, when we step back and look at progress over time and where we're at, we've already made considerable steps as a kind of unified voice in terms of the city, commission, council, community, to getting partway there. Now, we have a much larger step, which is, yes, we're going to solve for the subsidization issue of providing the affordable units that we want to replace there. But I think there's a much larger complexity around providing the totality of units there for all of our neighbors, and at the same time, the timing issue of when to left. I would just point out, if our first building was to provide another 139 units of affordable housing, there would tend to be a lot of discussion around, we're just increasing more subsidized housing, which at the start of this conversation was the tenor of almost all of these conversations, which was concern about subsidization of housing in Delta. And I think this shows how positive the discussion has been over time because we've moved away from that discussion to a different one, which is focused more on, one, the opportunity we have to provide housing to the entire city. And, you know, from our perspective, you know, we have a lot of neighbors who have a lot of interests, and we're very interested in hearing from them. But we also have, at times, a counter perspective, which is to represent people who can't be here. And one thing that we experience as a Housing Authority is quite often, we're speaking for folks who don't have a voice or folks who can't be in the room, and.
Not to interrupt, Jason, but I actually was wondering, because I have a question. How many renters are present in this room right now? Okay, I think that's very informative, because I think that is an excellent point, that Everett is actually a town that is primarily renters. Nearly 60% of our folks are renters. And yet, they are not present in this room while we are having this conversation, planning what the future of the city is going to look like, so.
Before you move on, just out of curiosity, because I would understand why you wouldn't want to put all of the low-income housing units back-to-back, right? Because you want to mix different income brackets with each other, right? So probably not going to make it in the first phase, understandable. Are you hoping to kind of sprinkle them in throughout the different buildings? But you also said you have to adhere to certain, I'm sure, specialized requirements for them. So do you think, I don't, I'm just more curious what your goal and hope is. I don't know if you've had it completely outlined yet.
Affordable housing tends to be built into unique buildings, unique to themselves due to the regulations around the tax credits. So most typically, you would see an affordable housing project which had, for example, we can use an existing example, which many of us know, which is the Mendrona Square project that was just built right neighboring to the Park District. So that's a low-income housing tax project. 67 of those units are Quintivento families, basically families with children in the Everett School District who have homeless issues or just in stable housing situations. In those particular projects and projects within the whole definition of low-income housing tax credits and affordability, as most of us know us, are tax credit projects, you tend to have variant income conditions or constraints, which tend to go from, say, 30% AMI to 50%, 60% AMI. And they tend to be in that 30%. 30% AMI to 50%, 60% AMI, and they tend to be in that 30% to 60% AMI band. And so that tends to be the demographics that meets requirements to take up residents in those places. And so, we would expect, as we move forward, to be producing housing affordability for those 139 units in a building structure fairly similar. It could change over time. This is going to be a very lengthy kind of master plan development, and should regulations change, or should we find more innovative ways, in particularly to mix populations of different incomes, we will. But for now, that's really standard practice, best practice.
Sure. Thank you.
Jason, one, one more question about, on the topic of kind of poverty decentralization and maybe this issue of sustainability of the project overall. I thought I heard you kind of mentioned that with that diversification, the kind of the idea is that individuals who might be renting at the higher levels, more of a, I don't know, maybe "market rate" isn't the term, but more of a market rate in some way are helping to cover the costs and, and maybe help balance out some of that. I guess the, what I'm seeing and maybe, or thinking about, just kind of as a matter of markets, how do you attract the, the higher-end renter or the, the person who would be paying something closer to a market rate to provide that extra income to cover the costs and maybe subsidize some of the costs of people who are paying less? I guess I'm having a hard time seeing how it doesn't all just moderate into the middle, and, and I guess the question, given that if there's not, I mean, the location, parking, other amenities, if someone can afford to pay $3,000 a month in rent, why would they rent there as opposed to downtown at one of the, you know, full-market-rate apartments that might offer more amenities? I guess, to me, it raises an issue of sustainability, is if you don't have those higher-end renters in there subsidizing that, are you able to cover your costs, and does that create a long-term sustainability problem?
So I'm hearing a couple of questions in there, if that's all right? Are we on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. So I think one of these discussion points is comparative economics. Why would someone choose this place versus another place? And we've had this discussion in this chamber before, and I think the general answer is it doesn't necessarily need to be that competitive. I think we know, at least in this market, that we have a supply shortage, we don't have a demand situation in which there is demand that's unmet. And so I think if we are just taking the reasonable person scenario, which situation do you accept as baseline facts, and then assessing the situation, I don't think there's a situation in which downtown is competing against Delta for residents, and I don't see that happening anytime soon. I actually think that all of the data runs in the opposite direction, and that neither place needs to be competing with each other. In total, we need a lot more housing over the entirety of Everett, and just those two particular areas in the city don't necessarily need to be seen as competing with each other. And, you know, we had that similar conversation with retail, and we might have it a little week, but again, later on in the evening, but I think that still applies. I think secondarily, as relates to the buildings, I think fundamentally, from a non-subsidized perspective, I think, I think even if you're, you are thinking in what is the most known kind of commoditized multifamily, market-rate apartment project, ultimately, that is what you're doing. You have larger units, you have smaller studio units, you have a mix, a variety of open ones, ones, some have views, some have a porch. Fundamentally, you're cross-subsidizing units based on people's ability to pay for view, for parking, for a wide variety of ancillary services. And so I think you don't need to stretch your imagination further than what you already know, as just a natural mechanism by which we always cross-subsidize each other to produce an economic whole. And I think when we're talking about, whether we're talking about the 15 stories that's on people's minds, or we're talking about which is more predominant at the Park District, your, what we typically would call kind of a five-over-two, your standard kind of apartment on a podium project, in those environments, it's no different. We have a multiplicity of unit mixes, unit types, to suit a wide variety of distinct tastes, ability to spend discretionary income, or folks who would prefer to spend more discretionary income on their housing than, than otherwise. All of those components, from, from my perspective, play into kind of the economic whole. And I would point out that one reason, we do have 15-story buildings positioned where they are through a very long design process. One is buffering for most of the neighborhood, and in particular, by the wetlands. But the second one is just pure topography. You're sitting at the top of a hill, 15 stories up, you have wide 360 views across the whole city of Everett, which is stunning and comparatively much better than most product anywhere in the city. And so I think from the perspective of why would anyone pay there, from my perspective, if you've been up to those heights and seen the view, it's fairly self-explanatory. It's stunning. It captures all that Everett does very well from a geographic perspective, and yet there's proximity to a lot of resources in the area. There will be a new park, there already is Wiggins Park, but there will be a new park, there will be a lot of amenities, there will be neighborhood retail, there'll be a wide variety of things that we don't see, certainly not at much scale in the rest of the city. And so that would be, in general, you know, my kind of argument for why a lot of these things aren't problems, but they are actual opportunities that we're trying to seize, both for the residents here today in Everett, but also for the residents in the future.
Most folks don't know this, but I, in a former life, I was an appraiser, and the views are directly related to the value of the property. So I think it's interesting that some of the best views in the city in the future might be located in a neighborhood that, that really didn't have the kind of investment that it deserved. So I think that is a really interesting point that you brought up, because valuation of property is directly tied to the view from the property. So, these will kind of be luxury views, which is interesting. I'm wondering if we could hear briefly from you, Commissioner Atkins, and then you, Commissioner Lark, briefly, Commissioner Lark, and then move the presentation along?
Yeah, just to underline your point of supply, or demand outstripping supply, the economic reality for a lot of renters is that you're applying to one or two dozen apartments to rent, and you may hear back from two, three of them for a tour, and then out of those two or three, you may be getting an offer to be able to actually rent from one of them. I mean, certainly for me and my friends, it's, it's a real struggle to find an apartment to actually rent, and I just do not see a future with the current growth that we're experiencing in this region where they're not able to fill units.
Dovetailing off of that, sorry, dovetailing off of that, like, we need to accommodate that growth. Talking to economic development specialists here in the county throughout the city, like, one of the biggest challenges we have for citing, you know, businesses here, relocating businesses here to create jobs, is the lack of housing that runs from, like, housing for entry-level positions all the way up to C-suite housing. There's just not enough homes, there's not enough beds in here to really start attracting the businesses that would help sustain our, sustain our community and make sure that we have the amenities and opportunities in the communities that our families and neighbors deserve, so richly deserve. So this is a really good step, because this will cover a lot of different incomes, a lot of different, a spectrum of people. And also, having, my last, my last home was an apartment, and it was on the 16th floor. By goodness gracious, it's a wonderful view. I highly recommend it. It's the best darned thing in the world.
Thank you for taking time out to answer our questions.
Thank you.
Okay, got maybe a couple more slides before I hand it off to Maria. Decarbonization is one of the other big needs, and the city's climate action plan has ambitious goals on that front, and that includes reducing the GHG emissions 50% by 2030 and 80% by 2050 compared to the 2040 baseline, and Mark's going to talk about that a little bit more shortly. Next slide. Equity in community building. Again, the mayor's 2020 initiative, One Everett, was a big part of this. EHA is also a founding neighbor, an investor in the Delta neighborhood since the 1940s. And as Jason talked about, Park District aims to decentralize poverty consistent with the neighborhood input that we had heard going back for several years. And before I talk, get into the last bullet, I want to mention that, you know, the no, the development under current zoning, which, which was referred to as like the no PDO alternative in the EIS, probably really means doing nothing. And four part of, four parts of that is probably because there would be, there wouldn't be streets or infrastructure improvements, likely because it probably wouldn't be feasible to do the required street improvements on all of those streets. If just doing the three-to-four-story development, given all the setbacks in the zoning provisions, is probably just not going to pencil. So this property is just going to sit there, and, and nothing will happen if you rely on developing under the current zoning, particularly with the intense street grid and the lack of depth on those small blocks, because it's expensive to redo those streets, build all those sidewalks, and build the other infrastructure that's needed. Therefore, there probably wouldn't be any new housing units, let alone the 1,400, the 400 or so that were mentioned in the EIS for that alternative. There wouldn't be neighborhood-serving retail uses that, that neighborhood desires, nor would there be some of these other amenities that are in the plan. And lastly, there wouldn't be a park that's being proposed. So, the Park District aims to create a, a community of opportunity, rather than house, house people along an arterial street. And that's actually one of the really unique things about this project is, a lot of the region is pack, trying to pack people along freeways in the arterial. The cool thing about this is, is, it's actually in the neighborhood off of the arterial street, and a lot of people want to live in that setting and not live on, right on Broadway, for instance.
Can I ask a question about that, too? And maybe you don't know the answer to this, but why 15 stories? Why not 20 stories? Why not 25 stories? Or more, 30 stories? If we have all this need, why, was there something about the way it penciled out that 15-story was, was determined to be the optimal, and maybe you lose some scaling at some point? Or why 15, why not 25?
Well, I do know that when the master plan, when GGLO was working on the original master plan a couple of years ago, there was a lot of community engagement and looking at different heights, and I don't think early on that they were looking at some of the taller heights. And then I think after part of working with the community and coming up with the alternatives, there was realization of getting up to that nine and 12 stories, you know, that when you look at mid-rise, mid-rise construction now is, is about seven stories, and a common thought is, you generally need to get at least a 12 to make it work, because you're, it's not going to pencil to just go one or two floors above mid-rise, because the cost of construction for what's needed to go above that wood frame over concrete. So that's, as a general rule, that's, you know, in our, in the planning I did, for instance, for Mount Lake Terrace, we went up, went up to 12. And generally, that's what we had been thinking with a project. And then as we started working with you and thinking about, and doing, doing the massing studies, and looking at number of ways we can get to the EHA's goal of 1,500 units, we started talking about, you know, maybe we should consider looking at 15, at 15 stories. That would allow extra flexibility for the developments, to have variable heights along some of the blocks. That might make it easier to get to 1,500. And perhaps, I know that was mentioned, four towers, but there could be a scenario where maybe you only need three at 15 stories, and the other buildings could be, could be lower at 12 and nine. And so we talked about that quite a bit. 15 allows you a little bit more flexibility. I don't think there was a need, you know, we, we still had some concern about thinking about the scale differences. And also, we looked at the existing Baker Heights apartment, we looked at, you know, the hospital is, is, is pretty tall, and it's probably a little, the hospital is probably a little lower than the equivalent to these 15 stories, but it's pretty, pretty big building. So 15 seemed to be something that, that might be tolerated, but it would allow greater flexibility in the design and, and getting to 1,500 units. That's kind of my take, and if anyone on that team has any other comments on that. But I think that, that's kind of my perspective of where that came from. So, non-residential program, again, the, the input that we have had over the last couple of years has shown the desire to integrate some of these amenities, neighborhood scale, scale retail and civic uses, to help fill some of the existing gaps in Delta and create a walkable community in the neighborhood. Next slide. So I, we've, Jason and others, we've talked at the, in the previous meetings about, EHA is, is working on MOUs and letters of intent. They're being formed with KSER Radio, YMCA Child Care Services, Early Education Services, and Shack Arts. Those are well down the road, they haven't, it's not a 100% done deal, but they're, they, these have been in the works for quite some time. And then additional partnerships are being pursued with a few neighborhood-scale retail businesses, and also there's been some discussions regarding the Everett Public Library branch. So, with that, I think I'll have Maria come up and talk about the rest of the non-residential program and micro-districts.
Hi, I'm Maria Royer. I am the principal and founder of Real Retail. We are a retail leasing and brokerage firm located here in Seattle. Some of the notable projects that you might have known or know in our region includes Isiqua Highlands, Kent Station, Ballard Blocks, Kirkland Urban, working on the Everett River Front right now, Downtown Bothell. So, extensive experience in these long-term, long-range projects, and looking at it from a retail lens. One other thing that everybody asks about, and especially in the city of Everett, is like, can I have a Trader Joe's? And I did the Trader Joe's work for 20 years, so I, I'm very, very familiar with grocery and what communities are looking for from a micro-district. So, in looking at this, we, we've, we've termed this as micro-district. In this micro-district, we really are looking to take what we call these synergistic uses and create a very vibrant, walkable community. And that vibrant and walkable community is inclusive of all the neighborhoods around it, but also creating a neighborhood that's internal to itself. And, and what does that look like? And you see this in these nodes that say retail, and from my perspective, retail is not just retail. It's the community, it's the daycare, it's the library, it's all of these things to create that vibrant, walkable community and that neighborhood, and everything that a neighborhood that you, you long for in a neighborhood is there. And what we also need for this community to be successful is what I call traffic generators. And these traffic generators are not necessarily just retail, but it's also very intentional of how we've designed this, and we can go to the next slide. It's just creating this really beautiful spine that goes down on Hemlock Street that connects, you know, 12th Street to 14th Street, and it connects you, and it brings you very intentionally in front of the park. And the park is really intended for everybody to have access to this park for everybody, and it to be highly programmed, and highly programmed is creating, again, more traffic and more uses there. We can go to the next slide. So, community-oriented uses, and what do these community-oriented uses look like? And it's really about the goals and the mission of, of the district. Startup shops and services that contribute to the mission of creating a vibrant, walkable neighborhood. We talk about the coffee shop across the street. And I, I look at this and I say, what do we need to make this successful? We don't want to build too much retail, because too much retail, we won't, we won't have enough density to support that. We know that for a fact, so we have to create all these different uses. So, a coffee shop bakery, all-day café. We don't need multiple, we need one doing a lot of different things. Taproom, everybody loves beer. We did a grocery analysis on this, really is there's not enough density in this trade area to support a traditional grocery store. You do have traditional grocery stores in the area, so something that's more in a micro, smaller level. Salon, personal services, pet supplies, boutique fitnesses... boutique fitnesses, professional services, restaurants. And another thing that we really advocate for is these incubator startup. And that incubator can be anybody that's in the community that wants to start their own business that maybe, you know, you, you build out these spaces, you make it low barrier of entry, you subsidize, this will have to be highly subsidized. You give flexible terms, but you also create something that somebody, if somebody wants to open their own flower shop and then went to school and decided that that's what they want to do, we want to support that from the internal, from the community. The next slide, this is, this shows you how vibrant and how welcoming this can be. And you can talk about having, you know, cinnamon in the parks and concerts in the parks. You can have all sorts of different kind of programming and things that happen. That's all to create this really, I guess, organic neighborhood where people thrive and all things thrive in the neighborhood. So this is the view looking down the street, showing what that could look like and how beautiful the park can be, how walkable the streets are, and how you can connect all of these different uses.
A couple of questions.
As if I can. Surprise. You mentioned, I think you said, of course, this is going to have to be subsidized. What, why of course? What do you mean by that? And what, and what was a subsidy? What does that mean, be subsidized?
A subsidy could be a lot of different things, but I think most importantly, it's building these spaces where it's very, very expensive for the spaces to be built. There's an economic, I guess, backdrop to this. So a place where I call turnkey, where somebody can come in and the floors are finished, as the walls are done, the lights are in, all of the utilities are there, that they can just come in and they can set up their shop. So that, in a lot of new developments, the space is raw and a tenant would have to come in and put their own tenant improvements in. So we're suggesting that through, to our client, that they provide those improvements. And that's one way of doing it.
And I guess, is that because of the location? Or is that because of the size of the community itself? Because my other question was going to be, is there an optimal size or a minimum size of the, on the site, like, you know, number of residences there that are, is kind of optimal or minimal to support and keep this sort of thing going?
There are, there are industry standards for supporting, let's say, a traditional grocery store or a movie theater or a coffee shop. There are metrics that each one of these kind of uses that they'll use. This is a little bit more nebulous because this is built out over time. So to answer your question, it's a number of different things. It is the density that's on the site. And when does that density come in? It will be phased over time. So the early adopters that will go into this retail node early on will need some subsidies to make it a low barrier of entry. And I, I feel like that first phase will probably be more of maybe some pop-up kind of scenarios and things like that.
But when fully built out, is it your experience that this would be the size big enough to generate and support this?
Especially with all the layering of all the community uses and potentially the library and the Y W C A and all these different uses really create that traffic. When you can go pick up your kids and you can go to the park and go to the soccer game and then you can go and have a beer. You look at downtown Woodinville at the Old Schoolhouse and they've got a play area right out in front and moms and dads are sitting there drinking beer or arena sports down in San Point where I live. It's, you can sit there and you can drop your kids off and you can have a multiple of different uses. So it definitely works.
And one other thing, you mentioned something along the lines of like concerts in the park kind of thing. Somebody has to organize those. Was there, is there, was there, is the H A, or is there going to be an arm or somebody here who would be kind of the, the managing body or who, who would promote those events and, and put them on?
Yeah. I mean, it could be a number of different, it could be the city of Everett, it could be the E H A, it could be the community itself. You know, those are all things that could happen, but that's to be determined. But yeah, somebody would have to manage that.
Really great questions. I want to put, maybe try to put in context what you were saying about subsidizing businesses. So, and, and maybe, and you can correct me if this is a bad analogy, but if you're renting, say, commercial space in a town, you might structure your lease to where it is a lesser rental amount for the first year. And then it may graduate as the business is able to get up to speed and increase their revenues. The, the rent would increase year two or year three, year four of the contract. So is that kind of what you're describing, but on a larger scale in terms of subsidizing early adopters of this space to get their, their businesses up and running while the population growth happens in that region that's going to ultimately support their business paying full, full rents for a commercial space in that area?
Yeah, that's exactly what you would do. I mean, you would basically design a program that's flexible, provides where as their business grows, their rent can grow as a percentage of their sales. That's a percentage rent or a variable rent. And, and instead of asking for a fixed minimum rent right from the get-go, where they may, they're, it may be just cost prohibitive for them, but let them stick their toes in the water, let's figure out how the rent works and make sure that they will be successful. We, the last thing that you want to do is set this up for an economic failure for these new tenants coming in. So the, the economics of the retail or the community services really have to work or, or it won't work.
And so that is not unusual at all?
No.
You're just describing, you're just describing it at a larger scale. And, and I want to give one specific example in Everett. I had a, I had a guy who fixed cars. And anybody who knows a good mechanic knows the value of a good mechanic. But because of the guidelines here in Everett, he was not permitted to continue fixing just his neighbor's cars as a small business on his property. So he was required to immediately scale his business upward by renting a commercial space. And his business failed because he tried to, he tried to grow it too big, too quickly. And now I don't have a good mechanic anymore. So there are, there are people involved in these equations, I guess, is my point.
Any other questions?
Hello, my name is Mark Frankel. I'm a principal at Ecotope, an engineering firm in Seattle. We're serving as energy, sustainability, and mechanical engineering consultants on this project. My involvement in this project started when Jason asked us to think about what these buildings would need to be like ten and twenty years down the road. That's a very unusual question for a developer. It's usually pulling teeth to get them to think three or five years out. So it's really exciting to be part of a project that's thinking long-term. And that's puts a spin on the way we've been thinking about sustainability, decarbonization, and resiliency in this project. Sustainability can mean a lot of different things. In the case of this project, we're thinking about it as a place and performance focus. What kind of place are we building and what's sustainable about that as a functioning community? And what is the performance of this with respect to energy and efficiency and decarbonization? Some of the features that we're incorporating, high-performance, energy-efficient buildings with heat pumps and heat recovery ventilation, that's a sort of state-of-the-art delivering low-carbon, high-performance buildings now, incorporating it throughout. Compact and walkable, bikeable development means lower energy use and, and more efficiency in, in using the site and transportation. Water-efficient fixtures and landscaping, including carbon sequestration landscaping as part of it, trying to focus on building landscaping that's pulling carbon out of the atmosphere with tree canopy as well and community gardens. And then onsite renewable energy, a rather substantial installation in, in conjunction with new codes, sort of trying to leap ahead with that. But it's a very large array that's required as part of this now under the code. And so we're trying to leverage that into resiliency features that I'll talk about in a moment. We're also talking about decarbonization in terms of sustainability as sort of a climate response. All-electric systems for heating, hot water, and cooking are incorporated. We're not putting any gas in any of the building systems for the residents. No onsite combustion for any other building systems with the exception of potentially the generator for the radio station, which has to have emergency operation. And we're looking into the feasibility of using batteries instead, since we have a big P V array that's generating electricity on site. So we're trying to look at whether that's feasible to take out the combustion there. We're going for low greenhouse gas impact refrigerants in the mechanical systems. Using, planning on C O two as the refrigerant in the hot water system. And then new low G H G refrigerants in the mechanical systems. We're going to have a substantial electric vehicle charging infrastructure in this project. I think twenty-five spaces right off the bat. And then over time, that would expand close to ninety in this first phase. We have to be ready for up to ninety plate, ninety charge stations in the first phase. Twenty-five of which have to be active when the building's complete. And I mentioned the landscaping. And then we're also trying to incorporate some resiliency features. And when you think about resiliency, you have to think about what are we trying to be resilient to? And, you know, five, eight years ago, we probably didn't really think about the fact that we had really significant heat waves that were dangerous to our residents, to our low-income residents in particular. We didn't think about wildfire smoke as a long-term problem that had to be resolved. And now that's a reality that we're all facing. And so we're trying to think about how do we make these buildings serve in, in those events? So the things we're trying to be resilient to, utility cost escalation with our very efficient building envelopes and building performance to reduce energy loads and energy costs. We're incorporating load flexibility. If you're familiar with Snowpud's new program, they have different pricing for different time of day use of electricity, and that's going to be more and more prevalent in our region. And so we're building the buildings to make, to respond to that through controlled system operation and controlled vehicle charging so that we can minimize the peak demand and reduce the cost of tenants. And then the onsite generation will also contribute to reduce tenant loads on energy use. We want to be resilient to heat events by providing cooling in all the units, any income level, so that's not typical. It's getting more typical, but that's not, hasn't been typical in the past in low income, but we're providing cooling in every unit and high-performance envelopes to reduce energy use and, and heat gain. With respect to smoke and air quality, we plan on very well-sealed building envelopes to keep pollutants out. And we're looking at air filtration systems, both at the unit level and in the common areas, trying to figure out how to make those pencil out. Thinking about things like Place of Refuge, where there's, at the very least, a place where people can go where the air is filtered and, and contained, even if the power is out. So that's the, the fourth element of resiliency of grid interruption. We have the P V on the roof to provide onsite power. We're trying to figure out ways to use that to, to maintain occupant health and safety in the event of a power outage for either Place of Refuge or emergency power, et cetera. This is all very well-aligned with, next slide please, with the Everett Climate Action Plan. There's a great deal of overlap with the goals that Everett has set for the Climate Action Plan. Electrification, building energy performance, onsite renewables, low greenhouse gas refrigerants, and resiliency in occupant health are all part of the all-electric construction goal of the Everett Climate Action Plan E one point one. We also have pretty extensive vehicle charging infrastructure plans in this project aligned with the transition in the Climate Action Plan to electric vehicles and robust charging network. Transit-oriented development is aligned with the Climate Action Plan goals specifically. Increased urban density also has been discussed extensively as being aligned with city goals and stormwater management as well. And that is my presentation on sustainability, decar. Questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, E H A, for that presentation.
Chair of chatters, if I may ask?
Yes.
We're closing in on nine P M.
Yeah, I, I was, we're, we're getting on with the next order of business, which is an opportunity for public comment. So this is a, this is a public hearing, correct?
It's a public hearing, correct.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing on this matter.
Second, or so moved?
Okay. Ayana, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Chatters.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ayana, do we have anyone online who wishes to comment on this?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Do we have folks who have signed up to comment here in person?
We do. Would you like me to call them?
Would you please?
Sure. The first is Sherry Reaton, I think. Sherry left, okay. I have Sonia. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sonia Bodge. I live in the Delta neighborhood. I'm the vice chair of the Delta Neighborhood Association. Last time I was here, I think Commissioner Shelby might be the only new member. And I, I found it interesting that nobody was from our neighborhood on the, the, none of the commissioners were from our neighborhood. Oh, sorry. I'm kind of frustrated that all of these questions are coming about now. These are questions and concerns we've had for years. And the design, the questions we've had, the, just anything going on with this has been a moving target all these years. I don't think any of your questions have been completely answered a hundred percent. We, we are living in the unknown every day. And all I can really tell you is how I feel and what I see on the ground. Commissioner Ballard seems to know a little more than most, you know, one, a few years ago, I tried to work with the manager at the Baker View. I live very close and many of those disabled elderly people go by my house. And I noticed a lady in a wheelchair trying to cross Sixteenth. And I tried to tell the city, everyone likes to cross it. Well, she couldn't get across. Anyway, everyone wants to use full, I tried to work with them to tell them how it was there. I had to advocate. We have to advocate all the time for our neighborhood and no one is helping us. And it's been years that we've been trying to get something done about Sixteenth. I finally went and asked the manager at Everett Housing if she would help me post signs to say I'm created a time for the traffic engineer to come and meet. Because not just there, I would take the bus in front of Baker View and there were no crosswalks or any painted, anything painted for their people to come pick them up to get them. I had to do that on my own time. Go and sit there with a table because they wouldn't let me into the building to advocate for them. And when they did come, the A D A lady came, the traffic engineer came, so when the communications lady came. And finally, I, I knew some of these people and they were very reticent about coming down to talk to them. But finally, I corralled the few that I knew and we had a little crowd and it was pouring rain. And then finally, somebody, I don't know who this man was, a couple of people from the Everett Housing Authority inside the building came out and said, hey, what's going on? I said, oh, well, I've organized, you know, something for the people here because they're my neighbors. And I just feel like you don't know our neighborhood, you've never bothered to come and walk it with us when this all began. Twelfth is not going to be the walking path to the bus. It's going to be Fifteenth. And I'm sorry, it's, there's a hill. Have you ever walked it? It's not going to be the place to go. Nobody wants to walk down Sixteenth either because of the traffic. So they cross Sixteenth to go to Seventeenth to go to Safeway. These are the small things you guys don't seem to know and no one is listening to us. I'm not saying don't build something here. I have employees and I'm aghast at how much they have to pay for their apartments in the South End. We need something, but it doesn't seem to me that anyone's listening to us about the bigger picture, about the surrounding area. Who's going to go to these high-end spas and boutique grocery stores? If they're all moderate income. You, you can't even, you can't even keep Broadway. Bartels has closed. Now you're going to take retail from the downtown core and put it in the middle of our neighborhood? I'm not to say we, you know, people keep talking about this coffee shop, but that is not the reason why we want this built. We didn't say build us this so we can have a coffee shop. We said, if you're going to do something, at least give us a coffee shop. So I'm just here to tell you how frustrated I am that this has just been a very difficult thing to keep up with.
Thank you, Sonia.
I hope you can listen to us.
Appreciate your time this evening. Ayana, do we have additional comments?
Would Jill come up, please? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jill Whiponhorst and I live in the Riverside neighborhood at twenty-one oh one Baker Avenue. I consider Delta to be my neighborhood because I drive through it to go to work. I go to the produce markets there. I walk my dog, ride my bike, go to Jackson Park. So I am here to mention with the size of the program of this development that it will, you know, affect most of North Everett. And, you know, the, the part that is really sticking in here and is contrary to developing a cohesive community on North End of Everett is the B M U. Northern Broadway cannot sustain businesses every day. It's just getting Bartels closed, you know. And for myself, as a resident, my sales tax from all of my purchases and disposable income is going to Marysville and Tuleup. I don't have what I need in Northern Everett. I don't want to go to South Everett because of all the traffic. So it will not take long for folks to understand how easy it is to get from North Everett into Marysville, Tuleup, and soon to Highway Nine through the new roundabout that's going in. You can ride your bike, you can walk. It takes like maybe eleven minutes and you're to a larger grocery store that has all of its entrance doors opened. You can get to a place where you can buy socks, you can get your pet food, you can get everything you need. you need. And so I don't think I'm the only person who's going to catch on to that. So from all the people going in, I truly believe that the sales tax revenue will not stay in Everett, particularly in North Everett. So I know that's a component of how to sustain everything and how to do infrastructure for the city, but if you don't have that, you know, that income, so you have to do more about the business development and the, I think, what do they call it, a BIA, like they have for Station District and Metro District. So I know we have the concept of retail on first floor. Of all the types of businesses that were listed, none of them provide the living wage for one adult who's working full-time, 2,080 hours a month, because that rate is $30 an hour. So people who would be working in there would probably not be able to live there, or people who are living there to work there and make it. So I know there has to be retail and a variety of things, but I think having been a part of Station District and Metro District and all of the elements of planning and assessing that went with the two metro area subplans, that this project did not go through as rigorous of an assessment. And so I think while we're hearing so many what-ifs, whys, exception, 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 is because maybe it didn't get that.
Would you conclude your comments, please?
I will, because I've got a few more, so I'm going to write a letter. But definitely want more housing, and 15 stories is not welcoming. It does not have quality of place. So that's all I'll say on the design. I wouldn't want to go there.
Thank you for being here and commenting. Additional comments?
Would Jean please come up?
My name's Jean Correo, and I live in the Delta neighborhood. I've lived there for 23 years. In 2001, when I moved in, I'm going to take a little bit different tack here, but I agree with my friends and neighbors. In 2001, when I moved here, I moved there because I could afford it. I wanted specifically to be in the North Everett area for work and other reasons. My utility bill, Everett Utilities, water and sewer, was $85 for two months. Pretty soon, that morphed over into being $85 a month. In 2020, it went to $99 a month. In February of '24, this month, it's $120 a month. This is for water and sewer. And I don't remember the exact year, but it was four or five years ago, there was an extreme rainy event in Everett. Imagine that. And northwest, the northwest neighborhood had severe flooding in their homes. Sewage was backing up into the homes. And I think that probably cost the city of Everett something. I'm not sure about that. But imagine four 15-story buildings adding to the sewer and water load on the city of Everett, using infrastructure that was built likely more than 100 years ago. Where's all the water going to go? Has that been thought out? Has an engineering study been done specifically on the sewers and the water? I know we've got water coming from the mountains, and Everett is pretty well set for that. I know, I've heard that, studied it, et cetera. But where's all the rest of the water go? And I have another comment about the new development. Somebody said new park. There is a park there, and it's called Wiggums Hollow Park, and it's been existence probably for 100 years. And the playground is being rebuilt, but that was not a feature of the Everett Housing Authority coming in and redeveloping that. The playground is being developed to include fixtures that can be used by all abilities of children and parents. So that's why that, there is no new park. They're letting us keep what we have. That's all I have to say. Thank you. And some of you guys had really good questions. I really liked them.
Thank you for being here this evening. Ayana, do we have another?
Would Jeff Kelly come up to speak? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to address a couple things. You, great question about the, about the sales tax revenue. But I'm wondering, how many of the new residents are already going to be Everett residents? So how many people are we going to have coming from out of Everett that are going to be adding to our sales tax revenue? Another thing is, as far as resources go, the Everett Housing Authority is a tax-exempt entity. And so all this building that we're doing, using this nonprofit, tax-exempt entity, isn't going to do anything for helping to pay for additional social services and some of these things that some of you are very concerned with. All right? I did do a prepared little speech here, so I'm going to go ahead and read that now. All right. So Section 13 of the Housing Authority Law of 1939, I'd correct myself, last time I was up here, I said 36, it's 39. The Planning, Zoning, and Building Laws. All housing projects of an authority shall be subject to the Planning, Zoning, Sanitary, and Building Laws, ordinances, and regulations applicable to the locality in which the housing project is situated. In the planning and location of any housing project, an authority shall take into consideration the relationship of the project to any larger plan or long-range program for the development of the area in which the housing authority functions. So I have a couple of questions on that. Has the housing authority disclosed to the city council or mayor that has plans to develop more high-density, non-taxable, 15-story buildings throughout Everett, which we've heard here tonight that that is actually the, you know, they're going in the opposite direction. They want to say this is the only place we're going to build 15-story buildings. But the law indicates that you must have plans to build in other ways, probably with private entities that are going to actually put into the community, which, you know, other than some of the things we've heard here, it's, you know, it's not going to be money. And also, does the city have a current and verifiable plan to build other 15-story, non-taxable apartment buildings? If the answer is no, then the project is in conflict with the law governing the housing authority. We, the Everett residents, have been having a robust public debate about the budget and where our money should be spent. One thing is certain is that we don't currently have enough money to meet the needs of Everett residents. Densifying our city using tax-exempt housing authority is going to further exacerbate that problem. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In view of the lateness of the evening and the number of questions that have arisen tonight, I would propose that we extend this public hearing to our next regular meeting.
I'd like to second that.
Ayana, it sounds like we have a motion. Is that correct, Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
And that has been properly seconded?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
No.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Can I ask what that means for the remainder of public comments? Or do you not be taking any more comments?
I think that we have folks who are here today who have made time in their schedules to be present, so I'd like us to still hear folks who came to speak. But then it sounds like there wants to, that our folks want more time for deliberation on this. So if we could continue calling up our speakers so we can hear from them.
Jacob Skinner, please.
Good evening, everyone. I live in the Port Gardner neighborhood. I own a home there. I guess for bona fides, I previously lived in Riverside, really liked it there, tried to buy a house there, spent a lot of time in Delta, couldn't make that work. Regardless, I'd like to ask the voting body here to adopt the resolution as recommended by the staff in their presentations today. In favor of the planned development overlay, this development will provide much-needed growth to the economic base of North Everett while addressing the shortage of housing within the city. The forward-thinking features of this project's design, such as mixed-use zoning, walkability, and public outdoor space, will help reduce the frequency and length of car trips within the city, reducing air pollution, noise pollution, and the overall social costs of car ownership per capita. Perhaps most importantly, these features will make the Park District a nice place to live, a nice place to live near, and a nice place to visit. My hope is that this project serves as a role model in its design for future development within the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sidney?
Hi, my name is Sidney Gillis. I live on East Marine View Drive, about four blocks from the development that is now called Baker Heights. As the evening's gone on, I've, I'm not even sure what I'm going to say now, but I, it's, it's sort of like you guys, the public hearing is on the night you guys are going to vote. So right off the bat, I didn't really understand that coming into this. I kind of feel conflicted about the project. I once worked as a reporter for six years at Real Change, which is a newspaper that the homeless sell to earn income in Seattle. And in that time, I watched Essor Terrace get redeveloped, and I'm, and I, I have misgivings about housing authorities getting into this kind of, they're really becoming private developers. But since my testimony at the city council, I've, I've actually kind of had a change of heart, like, well, that's really a good thing. They, they are going to provide a type, an income level of housing that isn't available elsewhere. But the problem is, when you drill into the numbers, and again, reminding you that 139 units are going to be at that very low income level, that's 30% of AMI, at least that's what I assume it, it has traditionally been among housing authorities. But if you look at the numbers of one person at, at 60% of AMI based on, I got a little chart here I printed out earlier, and this is for the Seattle Bellevue Everett. Everett is traditionally included in the Seattle Bellevue metro area. And this is saying that that would be an income for one person at 60% of AMI of, at 48, 48,600. And then 80% of area median income, which is definitely a range they're going to, I mean, he, Jason explained it, they have to have the income come in to subsidize the lower-income units. So at 80% of area median income, you're looking at 63, 350 on income that would be necessary to live there. Now, he said there wasn't going to be any constraints on it, but in any case, a normal landlord would want a certain, you know, how much income you earn to the rent that you're paying. And that would be 63,103, 50 for a one-person household at 80% of AMI. I don't make that much money. So the, the low-income affordability, definitely as a reporter watching this redevelopment at Essor Terrace, it's very fungible. And that, that in and of itself worries me. And as they're building over this long period of time, I do fear that they're going to need more money to do this thing. And though they say and have committed, and I don't know that they've committed, though they say that they would not sell Wiggums Hollow, the half of it that they own, I think that at some point, they're going to need the money to do that. And what I'm really hoping for is that somehow your recommendation to the city council could include that a binding agreement on the housing authority that they, they maintain, or that Wiggums Hollow be left whole. That's, that's pretty much what I came here to ask for.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Ryan, please.
All right. Hi, I'm Ryan, in the Delta neighborhood. This is a living document, so it's been evolving. Delta's proud of its low-income heritage, and we welcome more housing when it's paired with investments in community services and infrastructure. It has been stated that there's a historic lack of investment in Delta and that people would not shop at these retail locations. It is true that until now, the private market, the city, the county have failed to invest in Delta. Now with the housing authority, there's a partner willing to invest in providing the needs for the community. It's a well-documented fact that new development generally brings additional commerce and investment, hopefully spreading onto Broadway, which is a mess. The Park District includes such amenities as E Cap, Montessori preschool, YMCA childcare. It includes an indoor event venue in the new home of the KSAR radio station, yes, a coffee shop. The shack will have a space to host events for people of all ages. The plan also includes more open space than is required in keeping with the Park District theme. It's, I go both ways on this in so many, so many ways, because, you know, the letter we've received from the city, and after so much lobbying, you know, the biggest impediment here is the city, the lack of investment and commitment by the city. And, you know, the latest letter affirms that. So, okay, I'm in favor of the Park District PDO for the reasons that I listed above, but that's not, it's not like a blank check. And I think the city is the main, the main group that really is responsible here for making this, giving so much question to, is this going to be successful? The proposed rent-free library branch will serve multiple uses. The administration has rejected this request, but that doesn't mean the commission cannot recommend it, and that does not mean that the city council cannot approve it. The city council actually is supposed to control the budget. They haven't done that recently, but maybe I'm digressing. The city has failed to build a community center. The county has failed to build a community center or a youth center while they built a jail in our neighborhood. Next to low-income housing, the lowest-income elementary school in Everett, lowest-income census tract in the county. This is an opportunity as we look forward to the future of Wiggums Hollow Park, the portion owned by EHA, which is not part of the PDO, but I support efforts to build a recreation and teen center there next to Wiggums Hollow Park, with a lot of potential partnerships there. Although the city has also refused sidewalks, crosswalks, ADA ramps to be upgraded like they were on the west side of Broadway. We will continue to advocate for that.
Ryan, please try to wrap up your comments.
Okay. The city response has been no, but I would ask the commission to add that in. The city needs to invest in this. Okay. Whether the Park District attracts more people from outside of Everett or the other side of Broadway remains to be seen. One thing is for sure that the most densely populated neighborhood in North Everett can sustain the demands of these businesses and services. And if it's not approved, we won't have any of these things guaranteed. So.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Timothy, please.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Evans. I'm a Snohomish County resident. I was adopted back in 1965 in the city of Snohomish, up at Bickford Motors, went to Snohomish Schools. I now live in Everett homeless currently. I have, I'm a CDL Class A commercial truck driver registered with the federal database. I mainly drive dump trucks. I've done some county repair jobs, like the In-Debs Colena Project, the last three years I drove on that, and a couple other fix-its. My two questions tonight was on this project was there, has there been any studies or reports made on futuristic, like earthquake potential on the structures that are going to be up in the sky? And sewage handling, from the sewage plants, I take it is whether everything will flow and be tied into? And if so, is there a potential that they may need to add on to the sewage plant to handle the capabilities of the new flow?
Thank you.
Those two valid questions.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
I thought we were extending the public hearing. Just adjourn, maybe adjourn it.
Oh, correction, as I was, adjourning for the city.
Yeah, let's adjourn because I, we have just a couple of minutes, and if, if commissioners have additional questions. So what's the proper mechanism to pause the public hearing?
I think after having continued the public hearing, we can adjourn for the evening and continue this item as if it were unbroken at the next meeting, which would normally, which could be March 6th.
Okay.
Is your second option. 5th, excuse me, Tuesday, March 5th.
Okay.
I would like to amend my motion, then, to close public comment and adjourn for the evening.
Before you do that, because we may not have the opportunity to have these folks from EHA present again. So I'd just like to ask if there are additional questions in the last few minutes we have before 9:30, where it would be helpful to hear directly from this team from EHA?
I had a question for the gentleman who's responsible for mechanical and resiliency, if he wouldn't mind coming back up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. So you had mentioned that you were looking at onsite storage for the generation that you're going to do, whether it's PV or wind or similar. Are you thinking of that as something that the residents would also be able to take advantage of, since it would be common to the buildings themselves? Or would this be only for commercial and like KSCR?
It's actually meant mostly for the residents if we adopt a place of refuge, so they have a place to go in a power outage, or we're thinking about a circuit that's served in the power outage only to all the tenants, so they can plug in an air filter or computer. Those are still to be worked out. There's a lot of different ways we can do storage. You know, very soon, your cars can be able to go two-way into the building to the grid, so we're designating specific places in the garage where cars that are willing, could be tenant cars or fleet cars, to be part of the building service, can be parked in case of an emergency to serve the building. So there's a lot of different ways we could do storage. So I might have brought up more questions than I answered.
No, I think that's fantastic. I'd love to see a dedicated circuit where people could put, you know, like CPAPs or medicine coolers or fridges or whatever.
I don't want to make promises we can't deploy, but that's what we're looking at. Okay.
Additional questions, commissioners? Okay, so after deliberating with Commissioner Adkins, we believe the proper course is to make a motion to suspend the public hearing. So do I hear a motion?
I'd like to close public comment and suspend the public hearing, just so we bookend what we started right here, and we wrap up this part and move on just to deliberations for the next one.
We're not closing public comment.
Okay.
We're going to keep that open. But if you're, if I hear you correctly, you're making a motion to suspend the public hearing and adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
And Chair Chatters?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned for the evening.